March 12, 2019. We're going to go ahead and we're going to start with the study session this evening. But the first thing I'd like to do is introduce everyone. So down off the dais, to my far left is our city attorney Bill McClure. Next to him is our assistant city manager Nick Pegaros. To my left is our mayor pro tem Cecilia Taylor. To my right is council member Betsy Nash. To her right is council member Drew Combs. And up, down off the dais is our city clerk Judy Heron. If you have, Judy's the most important person here. If you want to do anything this evening, speak, interact with all of us, if you could please go ahead and we'll take public comment at multiple times during the meeting. If you could fill out a comment card and provide that to her so we know to call you up when we're dealing with that. So our first, if everyone could please stand, excuse me, if everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight we have a study session on how the city, on the best practices for dealing with our chronic homeless population. Really want to give thanks to the service providers who have joined us this evening to lend their professional expertise to this discussion. We're going to have the discussion led at a staff level by Commander Tony Dixon and Deputy Community Development Director Rhonda Kaufman. He'll give the presentation. And of course, we have Chief Bertini with them. Chief Bertini.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm just going to kick it off and I'm going to give it to the person who really has been doing the yeoman's share of work here in homelessness for Menlo Park. I think we can all understand and we're very much aware of it. This is not a Menlo Park issue. This is a societal issue, multifaceted, and so many, so many different factors that lead to these problems that are happening all over the state and all over the country. For the last five years, really Commander Dixon has taken the lead for the police department in dealing with this and getting, and having a lot of the help and solutions already in place. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Commander Dixon.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm just going to start off tonight by kind of giving you a data summary. I know we always throw about different numbers about how many different homeless people we have in Menlo Park, what our homeless population is in other cities. But just to start it with, so you have a general idea in Menlo Park what it is. The 2017 one-day count, our number was 47 unsheltered homeless individuals. The 2018 numbers will be released in either late May or early June. I was speaking to them today. In 2018, our calls for service related specifically to homelessness, there was 468 calls for service. The five that are listed were the top five, just in numbers. It wasn't in totality, of course. And these were specifically calls for service. These weren't, don't include officer-initiated activity where officers had gone on their own accord and had made contact with individuals in an effort to try to determine what was going on. The predominant geographic locations that we get our calls for service specifically related to homelessness are obviously the downtown, the Bayfront Marsh area, which is off of Bayfront Expressway, and then the creek bed. But traditionally, that's more obviously in the summer months when there's not so much rain. My involvement with the, my specific involvement, obviously I've been here for almost 30 years. So my involvement with the homeless population has been consistent. But really where we started to see a change in the way the department is dealing with the homelessness issue was, I don't know if you recall, behind Barone's at 1010 El Camino. There was a large encampment that kind of took place. The business owners at the time tried a myriad of different ways in trying, in an attempt to address it. Putting a porta potty there. But from the police perspective, it's publicly accessible. So they weren't necessarily trespassing. So we had to come up with different ways in which to deal with the issue that was at hand because it was completely growing and covering the area there where people were trying to have coffee, et cetera. Where that really started is us trying to determine, okay, of the people that are there are frequenting there, who are our top 10 call-getters? Who are we getting complaints about the most or who are we dealing with the most? And it was those that were there in the encampment. So then we started developing relationships with each one of the people there, trying to determine not necessarily why they're homeless, but what issues that were, they were having that were causing them to remain homeless. And then building relationships with our different service providers. I mean, I have to say, from a patrol perspective, I know that we consistently get training from our, the service agencies. But there's no way I could come here today and explain to you everything that everybody does. And we all work in partnership with different things and have different specialties. But that really was the beginning of our transition from an enforcement perspective to specifically looking at causal factors. And literally I made relationships with those 10 people, trying to determine what is going on with you specific 10. And developing that same, or fostering that same relationship with other officers in the department. Of those 10 that were there at the time, over a long period of time and with the help of all of our, the service organizations, we were able to find housing for all 10 of them. But it didn't solve anything because with the exception of one of them, they are all now back to where they were before. Not in the same location, but they are all now homeless. They all have different resources available to them and they've met new people and built new relationships. But we didn't do anything to solve homelessness in Menlo Park, which is kind of a wake-up call for the officers that here, you know, with law enforcement, if there's a problem, we throw a bunch of resources at it, the problem goes away. And now we say, okay, what's next? That, that obviously wasn't going to work here. One of the other things that we started working on with our officers, we're using a grant, is getting crisis intervention training for all of our officers. All of our field training officers, what that basically means is all of our officers in-house who train our new officers have crisis intervention training. And half of our patrol officers to date have crisis intervention training. And that's specifically with dealing with people with substance abuse problems and mental health issues. I've also developed a longstanding and great relationship with Fran in dealing with the issues that are occurring downtown and affecting the various downtown business and property owners. Fran and I work together regularly to the extent that she can text me on a weekend saying, hey, I have this problem. Can you help me out with this? I know exactly who she's talking about. I can text an officer and say, hey, can you guys go take care of this? What that really, I used the term boutique earlier. We're a small enough agency and we have such dedicated people that we're able to do a lot of things that, say, a San Francisco PD can't. They just don't. They don't have the resources. There's 7,000 people, 7,000 homeless people in San Francisco. Whereas in Menlo Park, there have been plenty of times that I've had a service provider call me and say, have you seen so-and-so? He hasn't taken his medication yet. I find, find them or have an officer go find them. We arrange through one of our partner agencies, a ride for that person to the hospital to take their medication and to bring them right back to where they were. You will not find another agency around here that is able to do that to the level that we are, just because of the relationships we've built with our consistent downtown population. Now specifically to the Bayfront area, there is a, that is more transient of a population. We still go out there. We go out there more than we actually do downtown. And we still provide the same level of services. It's just a different type of relationship that we have with the population there. A lot of the other things we've been doing has been education with the Rotary Club of Menlo Park. I've gone to the Menlo Park Kiwanis meetings in an attempt to try to let people know that there are certain things the police can and can't do when it comes to homeless members of the population. I mean, I'll get to a little bit more to that later on in the presentation. We also work with the SMART team, the Field Crisis Collaborative Committee. These are all county-wide groups that are specifically focused on dealing with homelessness issues or substance abuse or mental illness. To the, I put a bullet point here for the San Jose Mercury News. Our efforts were significant enough for an agency of our size to be highlighted in an article in the San Jose Mercury News. For both, there was a multi-piece article where I took a reporter out to the marshlands in the Bayfront and specifically showed them what we were talking about and how it's different than the traditional homeless population that we see in downtown Redwood City or downtown Menlo Park. I spoke a little bit about building partners, partnerships with our sister service agencies. One of the, most of the agencies represented here, our agency representatives here in the audience will be able to specifically talk more about their different agency. I just wanted to give an overview. One of the ones, the things that we offer that is not offered in all the cities in San Mateo County is Dignity on Wheels, which is through Project We Hope. We offer shower and laundry facilities. It's on a trailer that comes to Burgess Park every Wednesday at 7:00 a.m. That means any member of the homeless population can walk up with no questions asked, do a load of laundry, get their, take a shower. And it's there consistently every Monday, every Wednesday at 7:00 a.m. We have a longstanding relationship with Samaritan House. Again, they come also to our briefings and train our officers with regard to the services that they're able to provide currently. Street Life Ministries has become kind of my go-to agency just because of the ease of access. They also come to Menlo Park on Tuesday and Thursday evenings. I know you've seen them. You probably just didn't recognize seeing them. They're providing hot meals to the local homeless population on Tuesdays and Thursday evenings. The reason why that's of note is sometimes we get an occasional spike in calls for our homeless population because it increases on those days. But then it just disappears. But we know exactly why it's there, why it's occurring. Life Moves, again, with several different types of services available to the local homeless population. I can let them speak a little bit further to it. This is where the education piece comes. Here's two specific recent appeals court cases that were, for the city of Los Angeles. Speaking specifically about sleeping or loitering on public benches or on sidewalks. There's nothing that the police can do to tell somebody that they cannot sleep on the sidewalk. They can't sleep in a public park. They can't sit on a bench downtown. Just like, we encourage people to call all the time because we will go out to make contact with that person. We will talk to that person. We'll see if there's any services we can provide them. We'll even sometimes ask them, hey, do you want to pick a different spot? Because obviously as a spot you're in right now is irritating somebody, they could say no. And that's perfectly their right to do so. And the other thing that's interesting is I know you've seen on CCIN, people posting pictures of belongings, which appear to be the property of homeless persons downtown. And sometimes they are. Specifically, the Court of Appeal stated that unless it's abandoned, a threat to public safety or health or evidence of a crime or contraband, we can't immediately seize it. We can post it and say, if you don't move this within a certain amount of time, the police department is going to take custody of it. But then it just gets moved and it can get moved five feet away and we start the process all over again. Not to mention even if we were to not, if they're unable to pick up their property, we don't have the facility to house and hold property for 30 days for safekeeping, not knowing what's in there. Anytime somebody calls and complains, we'd have, we'd have to have a warehouse. In 2018, the Police Executive Research Forum convened 250 different law enforcement professionals to deal specifically with critical issues in policing at one of their conferences. They came up with 11 different steps that law enforcement agencies can take to improve their response to homelessness. As you can see on the screens, we've done 10 of them already and continue to do 10 of them. The one that we haven't done is obviously create, expand homelessness courts, which we don't have the ability to do right now. But what we do do aside from these things is continue to evaluate. We're lucky enough to have, as I said, we're a small enough agency with a small enough homeless population, with great resources and great agencies that we work with. And we have money available to us either whether it be in our budgets, through grants, through donations that we can deal with. There's not a problem that we can deal with specifically for the individual. That concludes my specific presentation. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions for Commander Dixon?
I have one. And you may have touched on this, but if you could just a little bit more. The difference between the Bayfront homeless population and the downtown homeless, what is that difference exactly that you would?
I say in the sense that I think all of you could tell me right now in the position where they each hang out, each specific homeless person downtown. There's four or five, we have 10 that we all know of, but there's four or five that you could tell me, this person hangs out here. I know where to find that person. If we get a specific call about somebody yelling downtown, I can tell you as the call comes out who it is and probably where they're going to be. The population in the Bayfront, because of the vegetation that's there, sometimes I've gone out there and we've contacted 15 to 20 people. And there's other times we've walked through and only contacted three. And these are just suppositions on my part based upon my experiences out there. A lot of the homeless population out there do work. They have a variety of different jobs. But I was just speaking with somebody else earlier. I saw my first underground dwelling out in the, in the marshland. And literally it's a 12-foot hole that somebody has built. It has a roof. There's another person who has a home, if you will, out there that has a door with a chain and a padlock. It's much more built up. That's the difference. There's really no difference in a lack of housing, a lack of funds. But we do offer services to everyone, the same.
Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
Thank you. My question about Bayfront, does dignity on wheels, are they able to go out there as well?
So the trailer itself, the only reason I know this, for grad school, I did a project on how, where we were going to put that trailer. So I had to look at where our water facilities and sewage facilities are and did a heat map with our calls for service volume. And that's how we specifically chose Burgess. The problem is getting water or sewage facilities out there. I'm not saying they couldn't. We'd have to find a workaround. But there are other places in the county that they go. So I can't say no for sure. They can't go out there. We just have to find a source of water and a place to dump it.
So first off, Commander Dixon, you've been doing a tremendous amount of work on this on your own, with the support of the department, obviously. But we appreciate it very much. I wanted to start at the outset and say that. I've heard nothing but compliments about the work that you've done. At a council level, we haven't had this discussion. And so the first question I have is, what don't you have? How, I mean, have you been, as you've been doing this, what resources? And we're going to talk about that more in brainstorm with providers. But are there things that you think in your experience that if I had this, it would make a difference? Or if I had, for instance, you just said a second ago, we don't have someplace to store, to store things for people. Is there, what resources don't you have right now that you're lacking?
Well, I think the way that I look at things is a little bit different. There's no resource that I could have in my hand that's going to solve the issue of homelessness. There's just not. There are certainly things that we could do to put a Band-Aid over it for a period of time or to address the issues that are specifically from, again, that law enforcement way of, we're getting a lot of complaints about stuff. So let's get some sheds and put them downtown and we'll hide their stuff. That's not going to do anything to solve the issue itself. I, the magic wand, if I had the magic wand, the thing that I'd want is I can't force the homeless population to take advantage of the services that are available to them. There is no lack of funding or social services from my perspective here and the issues that I've been presented by our homeless population, that we cannot get them something to assist them and just outright refusal. Now, sometimes it's associated with substance abuse or mental illness for whatever the reason. But there's plenty of people that you know, because you're all been residents here for some time, that this is just the way of life that they've chosen. And as opposite as it may seem, or as unbelievable as it may seem to most of us, at least they know that they can contact me if something goes wrong. But I can't, I can't make people take advantage of the services that are, that are offered to them.
Okay. Any other questions from up here? Councilmember Taylor? I mean, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
Thank you. And before I did, forget to thank you for what you do, Commander. It's greatly appreciated and definitely needed. My question is, what's the, do you see a lot of seniors or is there a certain age range that you see or?
No, it runs the gamut. If you look at Val, Val hangs out in front of Starbucks. He's hung out for the library before. He used to hang out in front of Big Five. He has been homeless for 30-plus years, the entire time I've been here. That is the way of life he's chosen. I offer him, I talk to him all the time. He's an older gentleman, but he wasn't older when he was initially homeless. But we run into people who are 15, 17, 22, it just depends. And that's the, they're transient. So we may help them or provide them something with them today and never see them again. They may go to Redwood City or another, you know, get assistance from somebody else. So it's not consistently one specific age group.
So I think it would be really helpful is to hear from the providers, your perspective. If you could come up and share your perspective at the mic so we can hear that of, so a little bit of, so, because I'm not sure everyone on the council knows, knows exactly what it is to do. So a little bit about your organization, a little bit about what your perspective is on what we could be doing. If you have something that you think resource-wise that the council or the city could be doing more. And then afterwards, I'd like to come back to you, Ms. Kaufman. We haven't met, spent too much time yet, but I know you just went through a stakeholder process in Redwood City I'd love to talk about. So, Mr. Ives.
Thank you. Mayor Miller, Mayor Pro Tem Taylor, members of the council. I was the last one in the meeting, so I got nominated to be the ambassador for the service providers. I'm Bruce Ives. I'm the CEO of Life Moves. I'm here with Mark Saban, who's our director of outreach for San Mateo County. And with Stephen Huff, who is our outreach case manager specifically assigned to the region that includes Menlo Park. As the commander was saying, fighting homelessness is definitely a team effort. We have a lot of partners in that area. One of them is Samaritan House, which runs the core service agency that serves Menlo Park for homeless prevention and entry into the shelter system. And also runs the coordinated entry system for the county of San Mateo. And Cristiano Whiteens, who runs that CES team for Samaritan House is here tonight. And our friend Chris Richardson is also here, who is an executive with Downtown Streets Team, who does a lot of great work in urban areas all around the Bay Area and increasingly outside of California. So just a little bit about Life Moves and I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got. We are the largest provider of homeless shelter and services in Silicon Valley. We operate in San Mateo and Santa Clara counties. We're headquartered in Menlo Park and proud to be here. I'm a resident myself, 20-plus years. We have over 700 shelter beds in our 18 facilities. Half of those every night are occupied by children. So we do a lot of work with homeless families, including Haven Family House at 260 Vampur in Menlo Park. We partner also with Menlo Church as part of our Hotel de Zink rotating faith-based shelter. And perhaps most relevant for tonight's discussion, we are the provider of homeless outreach team, outreach services for San Mateo County, including this region. And that's a multidisciplinary approach that has us working with law enforcement, with medical providers, with chambers of commerce to identify the most vulnerable chronically homeless individuals in different communities and work with them to build trust and connect them to services. It's a successful model. Over half the people we work with, we eventually get admitted into shelters and on the path to housing. 10% we get directly into housing straight from the street. But as Commander Dixon was saying, it takes time. These people have been homeless for a long time. There are a number of barriers. And it just takes time for us to do the same kind of work that your police department does, building trust, building relationships, and bringing people into the shelter system and getting them on the pathway to homelessness. I think to the mayor's question about what could we use more of, I just think it's more intense collaboration. As Commander Dixon said, we have a lot of services. We have a lot of partners in this effort. I think we all share the same approach and the same mindset. And I think we just need to continue to work at it and focus in a collaborative partnering way to continue to address the problem. I also just wanted to note to the good, good question from Mayor Pro Tem Taylor. We are seeing an increasing age in the homeless population that we serve. Our Maple Street Shelter is a large single shelter serving 111 individuals. It's in Redwood City. The average age of that population is close to 50 now. And I think even in Menlo Park, from one of my conversations earlier with Mark and Stephen, a number of the folks we see who are chronically homeless in downtown Menlo Park are senior citizens or close to it. Whereas the population we see in the marshland tends to be a little bit younger, given the terrain that's there. whereas the population we see in the marshland tends to be a little bit younger, given the terrain that's there. I'm happy to answer any other questions or to have my colleagues step up and answer any questions that the council has.
I know that you, I actually did want to talk about specifically, because I know that you guys do outreach to our chronic homeless population specifically, and we can talk about both areas of the city, but I did want to sort of dive into the uniqueness of that and see if there is, is there any specific, so I understand the challenges in trying to get, in trying to get our homeless population to go ahead and actually take shelter when we have it available and take medical services when we have it available. And I'm trying to determine, is there anything that the city can be doing in support of your work there? Do you have enough resources in order to get that done, or is it? It's just very, it's, and you have a unique understanding. I guess this is probably isn't the proper venue, but if we were to create a collaborative team for each section of the city where we're seeing this taking place, because it does sound like it's a different problem use case, and we had members from each of the stakeholders to go ahead and work with that and identify specific actions the council or city could take in support of that process, do you think that's something that would move the needle with this population? Or do you think that you already have it, have it covered?
No, I think that it, I hadn't thought of it, but I think that it's a great suggestion. We do have a multidisciplinary approach, but we have a homeless outreach team which is trying to cover the entire county. So Stephen devotes time here at Menlo Park, but the region he covers also includes East Palo Alto, which is also impacted heavily by homelessness. So the ability to create what you're describing, which are smaller, more focused teams that are multidisciplinary, just focusing on Menlo Park, I think would bring a lot better collaboration and focus to the problem we have here. And we'd be happy to participate on behalf of our agency in those efforts.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Combs?
Yeah, I was wondering, so I feel like at times I'm getting two maybe not completely congruous pictures of the homeless issue. So at one end, there is this idea that it is a chronic issue, right, that it may be substance abuse or mental illness or just a lifestyle choice. On the other end, you hear that it is, it is definitely impacted by housing affordability. So is that, is that an issue, or which one, which one is more dominant when we're talking about the homeless population here in Menlo Park?
That's a great question. It's actually both. Yeah, and primarily for the families we see in our shelters. And we run a number of large family shelters. We do all the family shelters in San Mateo County. It tends to be more economic pressure, displacement from increased rents. We see that also on the single side, but with single individuals, you also tend to see more of the chronic homelessness that's gone on for years and a much higher incidence of mental health and drug addiction.
So then is it that with regards to the housing affordability, that those people cycle into homelessness and you guys or others offer services and then they at some point possibly cycle out? Or do they then become chronic homeless? Just some sense of like what happens to, you know, to that, that population that is like impacted, that is homeless based on affordability issues?
Yeah, so the most recent data we have from Haven Family House in Menlo Park, which has 23 apartments for homeless families, they stay with us an average of about four months. We do intensive case management and services with them. Where they go splits about a third, a third, and a third. Almost all of them, 89% of the families we work with who complete our program return to stable housing and self-sufficiency. About one-third of them stay in San Mateo County. Almost all of those families have access to some sort of voucher or subsidy that makes it affordable for them to stay here. And we work closely with Samaritan House and CES and the county on a variety of voucher programs that the county makes available, that HUD makes available, and the Veterans Administration makes available. So about a third staying here mostly on voucher. About a third of them will move elsewhere in the Bay Area to more affordable locations, further south in Santa Clara County, further to the East Bay, although those areas increasingly are becoming less and less affordable. And about one-third of the families will leave the Bay Area altogether, relocate to the Central Valley, to Nevada, to other lower-cost locations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you so much. My name is David Charon. I'm a pastor, Executive Director of Street Life Ministries. I don't know how much you know about what we do, but we have been meeting and serving meals for 18 years at the Menlo Park train station on Tuesdays and Thursday nights. I've been a part of the ministry for 12 years and been leading it since I came there. We have two other nights where we meet on Mondays and Wednesday nights in Redwood City, and then we have another location in Palo Alto that meets on Monday nights at, on Middlefield Road, right by, across the street from Safeway, at First Christian Church. What we do is, is we really, we're a nighttime meal. We don't start until seven o'clock at night, and we have, we do some songs and we have a message, and then we have a hot meal that shows up around eight o'clock. And we're, we're there primarily to develop friendship and relationship with the folks that live on the street to try and find out where they're at, where we can help better suit, better fit them with agencies. We, we're very connected with the Menlo Park Police Department and Life Moves, and our goal is really to just build trust and a relationship with the folks that live on the street and then try to help walk them through where they need to go. I was homeless. I lived on the street for several years. I've got 13 years in recovery myself. I went through Salvation Army, and when I graduated from Salvation Army, I ended up at Menlo Park Presbyterian Church and then ended up at Street Church and then became the leader of it. So kind of interesting how I was once homeless and now I'm leading a homeless ministry. But, you know, just a quick story. I don't know if you've ever met a gentleman. His name's David Hensonberry. He's chronically been homeless for many years, over 20 years. I've known him ever since I came to the ministry. You know, just a severe alcoholic and just was really just hard with the police department for many years. And that's kind of how I developed my relationship with Mr. Dixon and stuff. But just, you know, recently, he's gotten clean and sober. He's just got an apartment in Colma. He's, I'm now his payee rep, so we're working on his rent and stuff like that. Still likes to take the ready wheels and hang out in the downtown Menlo Park, so I'm sure you still see him. But no longer, and he's no longer hanging out and being drunk and inebriated all over Menlo Park, but he loves Menlo Park. And that's part of like what happens, is our folks, sometimes they don't just want to get off the street. You know, he took a long time how to get to, how to get to a bottom. But then when he got there, we were there for him and helped him walk through it and got him some mental health. And then he went through the mental health piece and then quit drinking, and now he's doing really good. So that's kind of what we do. And try to, you know, like the gentleman before me, we're working with City Team, Salvation Army, Victory Outreach, and Project 90. And a lot of our folks, they just can't afford to live here. So what we try to do is work with them. I've got a couple of guys right now, they're going through City Team Pennsylvania. And when they graduate from that program, they will stay with City Team and work through their internship program, try to get employment. And they'll most likely just stay out in Pennsylvania and live out there where it's a lot cheaper to live. You know, it's coming to the realization with some of our folks that when they do decide to get off the street, that we have to sit down with them and have that hard conversation and say, hey, you know what? San Mateo County and Santa Clara County might not be where you're going to end up living for the rest of your life. Are you okay with that? And so we start walking through that. What does it look like? Do you have family that you can reconcile with in other places in the country? Can we move you out to the valley where maybe we can get you a job and have some, some assistance wrapped around you so you don't end up, you know, kind of derailing again? And so we've been pretty successful at doing that with some of our folks as well.
Excellent. Any questions? Anyone? Amazing work.
Cool, thank you.
Really amazing work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, please, yeah, that'd be great.
I'm recovering from knee surgery. I apologize. It's going to take me a while.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting me and letting us speak tonight. My name is Chris Richardson with Downtown Streets Team. If you're not familiar with us, we are what we call Work Experience Program, a volunteer program where unhoused individuals volunteer in their community, beautifying their community. That could be in a downtown or in an encampment in exchange for services and a basic need stipend as a pathway into not only employment or increased income, but also into housing as well. We actually launched in Palo Alto. I'm originally from Palo Alto. And we're in 13 communities in eight counties now, but not here, in San Mateo County. So I'm really leaning on a lot of the folks here who I'm big fans of, who you've already heard from so far. One of the things we're proud of, we have almost 1,800 success stories since we started counting in 2009. That number obviously goes up every year as we enter more communities, but those are folks who have permanently moved out of homelessness or into employment or both. And as you can imagine, and as my colleagues have said thus far, it's incredibly hard, especially with housing here, and especially without subsidies. Most of our folks have actually worked their way out without subsidies, which is every single time a miracle. For someone to be on the street even with employment and to move on into housing in this area is truly incredible. And so you can imagine how inspiring those folks' stories are. Last year, we were highlighted as one of five evidence-based practices in the state of California by the League of California Cities and the California State Association of Counties in a report by the Institute for Local Government. And we're the only one of those evidence-based practices to go beyond a single community. And what we do is really simple, really unique, and it's not happening in most communities here in California. Having said that, what we do, every single one of our success stories, we share with our partners. So like Bruce said, collaboration is key. In fact, with the Opportunity Center, in the first five years when we were only operating in just Palo Alto, I think just about every single one of our success stories was in partnership with the folks at the Opportunity Center at that time. So we have this environmental impact, this behavioral impact on a community, and really that changing of perceptions is so important. I can't tell you the number of business owners that we talked to when we first come into communities that say, you know, we don't want to help, we're so fed up, we're so frustrated. And we were actually born outside of, or born from a business improvement district. And to hear those same businesses want to help and get involved because they can see an impact, you know, one of the things is there's so many, for example, cities that are spending a lot of time, energy, money on this issue, and they're sometimes housing people and having these success stories, and, you know, the general community doesn't get to see it. All they see is the problem getting worse, or they see the same 10 people on the street, and they get frustrated. And we all get frustrated if we don't know how to help. And that's, that's one of the impacts that we've had. You know, I'd say the HOT teams, they've been, they've been proven successful for a long time. You know, the police oftentimes, they're first responders to, you know, folks in crisis. And that's not always the best way to build trust, and that's why we're big fans of the HOT team. And in the work that we've done, we've been able to engage folks outside of kind of that crisis response team and be there for years. So out of the folks that I've known since I've been doing this work for the last decade in Palo Alto, for example, of all the people that have been unhoused there for a really long time, I can think of two people that didn't join the Downtown Streets Team at one point or the other. So sometimes it takes a really long time. Sometimes it takes professionals outside of a police uniform. Sometimes it does take folks in a police uniform. And then sometimes it takes folks just wearing a yellow shirt like our folks do, where they can see their peers and say, hey, that's Bob. You know, I used to sleep in the bushes with Bob. I used to, you know, do whatever with Bob. And if he's doing really good, he looks healthy, he's got all his teeth, is that him in a brand-new used car? Then, you know, if Bob can do it, I can do it type of thing. So I'd urge you to try to continue working with different outreach methods and then also be creative with funding. So a lot of our funding, for example, comes from public works contracts, for example. Most public works departments don't think they have, well, not that they don't have anything to do with homelessness, but that their funding can't go towards homelessness. And this issue's becoming the number-one issue for the 11 biggest cities in California, for example. All the mayors have said that, and so to be creative with your funding sources and work with the county, you know, who has additional funding this year through SB2 is what we recommend. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christiana White Dance, and I'm from Samaritan House. So Samaritan House operates the core agency that services Menlo Park. We provide basic safety net services for individuals and families in the area. So that includes food, clothing. We operate two medical clinics in Redwood City and in San Mateo for those who don't have access to primary care physicians. And then we also provide financial assistance for prevention services around homelessness. So for Menlo Park residents in particular, we've served 24 households since July, and that includes financial assistance around deposits for new housing, keeping them housed with rental arrears, and then also utility assistance. So if they fall behind on their PG&E or their water or their garbage, we're able to help them with that as well. And then we also provide case management and linkages to other resources. So that's the Samaritan House as a core agency. And then we also operate the Coordinated Entry System, which as Bruce was explaining before, is the entryway to shelter in San Mateo County. So all placements for shelter as well as housing vouchers are done through the Coordinated Entry System. So we've worked very closely with Stephen and other members from the HOT team to go out and do outreach within Menlo Park and other areas of the county. We've been out one time to the marshland with the HOT outreach team, and then we also are planning other outreach with them specifically to the marshlands. And then they're able to call us at any time if they want to do a phone assessment. So that way, those individuals can go into shelter when they're ready to go into shelter. And then they're also placed in the pool for any housing vouchers that might become available. In addition, we also do diversion services with families and individuals. So if they do have any family or friends that they can stay with, we want to try to keep them out of the shelter system and keep those limited resources for the chronically homeless and those who need it the most. So we have flexible funding available to help people to, like I said, link with families or friends and stay with them until they're able to get into either more permanent housing or if that's the permanent housing that works for them, we're able to help them sustain that. So I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information.
I think we're, I think we're great. Thank you so much. It's wonderful work.
Hi, Your Honor. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much for this time. I must say, I'm probably the oldest geezer around here that, so I'm going to speak on a few things on my behalf. One thing I want to say first of all is I'm super proud of this guy, Dave. I met him when he was sleeping on the floor of the church, and so I've been around a long time, working with homeless and so forth, and to see how far Dave's come and how he's picked himself up. So I've been working with homeless. I moved out here 40 years ago, lived in East Palo Alto as a mug, spent the night in the hospital and that sort of thing. So it's been quite a, an eye-opening experience over these 40 years to see those that have and those that have not. I have a program called Hearts for Homeless. At the moment, it's fairly small, but we helped start a lot of the programs at Menlo Church, and we take vans, go out in the street and pick up the homeless people. And so I've been working with this for quite some time. One of the stories that I'd like to quickly mention is that there's a fellow that I don't know if some of the police officers may know that had been around for at least 20 years. One of his last locations in Menlo Park, he was sleeping under the big pine tree over by Foster Freeze. And so he'd been there for three years and so forth. And so anyway, he was arrested about a year and a half ago. Found him in jail, pulled him out of jail, got him into some programs. Fortunately, went through some of the projects at Samaritan House, Safe Harbor, did these various programs. And it was January, finished a year clean and sober, but putting him through some of the different programs and helping him to hold his hand and to carry him through these different programs. There's so many service agencies and so forth that are out there. So it's what I'm finding that's so predominant. There are so many agencies, so many people that are out there that really, really want to help. And so how can we begin to connect these? And my experience has been that, to create more of a personal, a humanistic approach. So at Hearts for Homeless, we're working, we're in the very beginning stages of creating an advocacy program. It's somewhat like the Child Advocate Program, where as we bring in volunteers and train them. I've just been working with a deal with the Stanford Medical School, and they have offered to help do some training to these advocates to help them to become what we're going to call certified, certified advocates. They're not going to have the uniform on, but we want to be closely directed with uniform people. We want to be closely directed with all the different agencies and things that are out there so that we can have these advocates that are tied up to essentially to be one-on-one partnering with homeless people. And so one of the projects that I'm finding that I've been confronted with is that it's not so much helping the homeless people as it is helping the people that want to help the homeless people, so creating programs to help them to do that. So again, we're in the very beginning stages. I'm very excited about what we're doing. I've been doing a fair bit of study with UBI, Universal Basic Income. Michael Tubbs, who graduated from Stanford, who's the mayor at Stockton and so forth, has been doing some things in his city. So I think there's a way that the homeless programs can be tied into this, and it's going to almost help to justify a little bit more the UBI approach that people are trying to come forward with. So again, I'm kind of spreading things all over the place. We have a lot of things. We have a lot of things going. I'm very excited about it. The thing that's so difficult is I think the homeless population is continuing to explode, especially in the RV area, where people are doing that and living underground, as he was talking about. It's getting really, really desperate. To be able to get these homeless people to come off of the street, a lot of them, I'll put my arm around them and say, "Hey, let's go to a shelter," and they'll say, "No, no, I've been there. I've done that. I don't want to do that." But if you can really begin to establish a connection with these people, a one-on-one connection, then all of a sudden, you can build a relationship, and then they will start to come forward so that they can get some self-motivation, some self-respect. I do some programs at Safe Harbor. It's one of the very few, what's called dry shelters. I didn't even know this. I'm sorry. Most shelters are dry shelters. I would say, and I could be wrong, but 99% of the shelters are dry shelters, meaning they can't drink, they can't do this, they can't, can't, can't. Safe Harbor of Samaritan House says, "If you have that problem, you're welcome." So every night, they have 100 people in there. I do a program every other Sunday over there called Connect With Your Soul, to help these people to try to get self-empowered and that sort of thing. So anyway, again, basically what I'm saying, I was just interviewed by three different classes at Hillview Middle School, and I'm finding the young people, the young people, not to exclude the rest of us and so forth, but they have, they get it. Their compassion is ready to put their arms around these people and accept them and to help them and to bring them in. So these are the types of people, I'm not saying necessarily they have to be in middle school, but 20s and 30s and 40-year-olds are really, really getting it that we've got to do something more. So I just kind of wanted to present that. I'm super happy to be here. I'm super happy that you're opening up to this and love to follow up in any way I can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we have a limited amount of time now to follow up. This is a study session, so this isn't the end of the discussion. This is, we talk about this, and the staff brings us back items for action. And so real quickly, and I am going to come to you, Ms. Kaufman, to talk to you about your experience in Redwood City, but real quickly, I do want to just follow up on some of the items that were discussed with us by the service providers with my colleagues because I don't want to let time pass. So one of the things, talking about bringing the Downtown Streets team to Menlo Park, is something you guys are all interested in? Yes, right. So that's one action item. Next action item, looking at Project Dignity to the Bayfront. I think we all want to look, and that was a wonderful question. I think we all want to figure out what resources are necessary in order to have that accomplished. And we have stakeholders out there who should be looking to partner with us on that. So that's something we'd like to look at. Very much, you know, the other items that you break down, when you talk about family connections or housing locator assistance, all of those, I think, come under, under subsets depending upon the individual whom you're addressing. And so what Mr. Ives was talking about and the other providers, which I think is what I would love to see us have here to supplement the work that our police department is already doing, is a program where we bring everyone together in a task force, and we concentrate on the, each particular member of our homeless population, and what can we do as a group, as a group of providers together in the department in order to help get them off the street. So having that task force meet regularly and intense collaboration, I think, is that something that you guys would all be interested in? Yes, yes. So I think, so those are three measurables right away that can come back to us. And I think if we're embarking on those three paths, we're going to learn real quickly what resources that you all need from us as a city that you don't have right now in order to achieve success in that area. And we can certainly, but everything you guys are doing is already so amazing. It's hard to, I think, it's hard to, I just very much want to be able to support that. And I think, I think a big part of that on our side is the interaction with the public around those efforts and how we bring them to their fullest, their fullest merit. Ms. Kaufman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Is this on? Can you hear me? Yes. So yeah, as you know, this is my second week here, and I've worked in Redwood City for many years. Redwood City's very different from Menlo Park with regard to its homeless population. Redwood City has the second-highest homeless population in the county. So we had a substantial amount of services and a lot of funding going toward services. I think a lot of, a lot of folks were hearing about what went to City Council last night, so I think I'll just focus on that for tonight. The city has a lot of different safety net services, is one of the core service centers, but we, at the time, identified that we needed to do more. And so the City Council, we had a budget surplus, and so half a million dollars was set aside for an interdisciplinary team made up of one member of each of the city departments, which was called the Housing and Homelessness Innovation Team, was to get together and identify how we wanted to use those funds to address homelessness. And so that team came up with a few ideas. Number one, which didn't really cost any money at all, when all those members of all the departments got together, we have police, fire, public works, finance, community development, you realize that, that everybody is touching, you know, working on the homeless issue in some way or another. And so, and a lot of, a lot of us were receiving funding, or funding organizations were providing some service. So we just created a comprehensive list, much like what Commander Dixon talked to you about, which, what he, what he is doing. I think he provided a lot of that in his PowerPoint, but creating a resource list and making that available to identify what all is actually happening. And that's, that list was very comprehensive when we all put ours together. So that was easy to do. And then that list could be provided to the community as, as a place that they could, they knew who to contact or where to refer folks who were homeless if they encountered them on the street or wanted to do something to help. Also, the, the use of the money, we identified that the Downtown Streets team was, was a great program that would be beneficial for Redwood City. So that the council last night approved the use of funds to bring the Downtown Streets team to Redwood City. Again, with a much larger population of homeless there, that's, makes a lot of sense. So they're moving forth, towards that. And then another one of the, the greatest issues that we saw with regard to homeless was identifying affordable housing for folks who were homeless to get into. So we were, we funded a lot of shelters, including a lot of the great organizations that spoke to you tonight, and services, service providers. And they often had people staying in their shelter for very long periods of time, extended, longer than they would normally. Say if they were a 30-day shelter, they might ask for a 60- or 90-day extension because they couldn't locate housing to get folks out into stable housing. So one, one of the other recommendations that went to the council was to, to spend some money on, on hiring a position, a person to be a housing locator, who would actually identify affordable housing for folks to get them into housing sooner. So those were some of the, the larger strategies that were recommended to council for the use of those funds in Redwood City.
Is there anything that we, that we didn't ask for that any of you think we should have, in terms of next steps moving forward?
Just to underscore Rhonda's point about sort of the size and critical mass for some of these programs, there's a number of different models that we employ in different locations that might have some value. I think if we got together as a sort of interdisciplinary team that you were talking about, Mayor Mueller, we'd be happy to host folks for site visits to some of the different programs that we run. So in Palo Alto, we have a drop-in center that serves 80 to 100 people a day. In San Jose, we're now running a safe parking site geared towards families for people who are living in vehicles. In the city of San Mateo, we operate the Vendome, which is a 16-unit permanent supportive housing site, which has helped to really clear up the chronic homeless problem in downtown San Mateo. These models may or may not be a good fit for Menlo Park, but as I said, we'd be happy to take the team through and tour these sites and get more ideas for collaboration focused in this multidisciplinary way.
Excellent. Thank you. Do you guys have what you need, do you think, from us?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to kind of, have more of an education for the public and for the council about what, what is already being done. You know, we do participate in the HOT team, but we're always looking for more ways to deal with this, this issue. So, and we're going to go back and then take a look at the three recommendations and be able to come and report back to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to invite everybody here, any Tuesday and Thursday night, to come at 7:00 to the Menlo Park train station. Come hungry. We serve the best meal in San Mateo County and Santa Clara County. You will never eat a better meal than what we serve every Tuesday and Thursday night. But I just, you know, I invite you to come out and just see what we do and get to meet some of the folks that we serve, and just get a feel for the heartbeat of, of the folks that we're trying to help get off the street. I think it'd be great for them to also see you and your faces out there because our folks know you guys, and they know your faces. They spent a lot of time around this park. They spent a lot of time in the library, and so they know you. So I think it would really be important for them to also see your presence there, serving, maybe serve a meal, or just come and shake your hand and just, you know, let them know that you care and that you're working towards helping.
So what I'd like to do between now and the next time this comes to council, is I'd like to actually sit down with all of the service providers and with staff, and really, in that, in that more informal setting, really sit down and identify some steps that we're going to go ahead and move, moving forward. And then we'll go ahead and bring it to council queued up. So that works for everyone.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. That work for you guys? Yeah. All right. We're going to take just a five-minute break before we go and start the next, next session. First off, if anyone is here this evening for the 2245 AV Avenue Philip Brooks School Public Carrying, the item has been rescheduled to April 9. And so the other thing I'd like to do at this time is go ahead and introduce Nikki Nagaya, the Assistant Public, Public Works Director, who's going to introduce the new Safe Routes to School Coordinator.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Nikki Nagaya, Assistant Public Works Director. And I'm very excited to be here to introduce Andre Anka-Dhu, who's joining us with a contract from Alta Planning and Design to kick off the city's Safe Routes to School program. So I think her first day is today, so welcoming her to the city with an introduction tonight. Her professional background's in urban planning with a specialization in urban revitalization, healthy neighborhoods, citizen involvement, and community outreach. And she's coming to us from Montreal, so explains my poor French-Canadian accent that I use to introduce her. But she worked for a local NGO there promoting, a project promoting and improving active transportation among students at three elementary schools, and before that lived, oh, excuse me, also lived in Brussels for the last three years before coming to Cupertino last summer with her family, so relatively new to the Bay Area. Has a bachelor's degree in urban planning from the Faculty of Environmental Design from University of Montreal, and a graduate, a graduated diploma in management and sustainable development from HEC Montreal as well. So we're really excited to have her on board, and we're also thrilled to unveil to you tonight the draft Safe Routes to School strategy that Alta has prepared for us. There's a copy on the dais. There's also a number of copies in the back of the room. It's the, the blue document like this. We'll be shopping that around over the coming weeks as she gets out and introduces herself to the different stakeholders at the schools. And also wanted to give a special shout-out to Nick Yee, the city's Transportation Demand Management Coordinator, who's here, and very happy to have her on board to be able to transition this program off of his plate as well. So just excited to introduce her, and I'm sure you'll be seeing her around. So, thank you.
Welcome. We're excited to have you. Okay. There are no items to report out of closed session this evening, so we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment. If anyone has a public comment they'd like to give this evening, if you could go ahead and please pull out the card in the back room and go ahead and bring it to Ms., to Ms. Herron. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Do we have any public comment speakers tonight, Ms. Herron? Okay, let me go ahead and pull it up. Okay, our first speaker this evening is Jen Wallison.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to extend a heartfelt welcome to Andre An, the new Safe Routes to School Coordinator. And I hope that this is the beginning of a new era in Safe Routes for Menlo Park, and I would encourage all of you to get to know her, give her your perspective around town, and for anyone watching at home to also reach out and give her your knowledge because residents are really what are going to make this happen in conjunction with the city and the schools. So thank you. I'm excited to work with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Jim Lewis with donated time from Karen Krieger. Good evening, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller and Councilmembers. My name's Jim Lewis, and I'm this year's president of the Menlo Park Historic Association. In five days, on March 17th, the annual holiday known as St. Patrick's Day will occur. This is especially significant in the city of Menlo Park as it's a sister city with Galway, Ireland. For those not familiar with Galway, let me share with you that it has a population of about 100,000 people located on the west side of the, of Ireland. It has a major university known as the National University of Ireland in Galway with approximately 18,000 students with links to Stanford University. Hewlett Packard's European headquarters is also located in Galway, Ireland. And Menlo Park's link to Galway began approximately 150 years ago, when two immigrants from Galway traveled to Menlo Park and purchased a large ranch located near El Camino Real and Ravenswood Avenue. They named the ranch Menlo Park as it reminded them of a village in Galway known as Menlo. At the entrance to the ranch, they constructed a large gate, similar to appearance, to one that was near what they called Menlo Castle. This gate was constructed in Menlo Park in 1864, but came down about 60 years later in 1922. I'm pleased to inform you that a replica of this gate has recently been constructed on the corner of Ravenswood Avenue and Alma Street next to the main library. This Sunday, March 17th, at 2:00 p.m., a dedication and ribbon-cutting is planned, and each of you and the entire community are most welcome to attend. This project has been underway for many years, following the vision and efforts of a Menlo Park citizen, Ernst Meisner. Fast forward to year 2013, Menlo Park signed a friendship agreement with the Galway mayor, followed three years later with a full-fledged sister-city agreement on June 3, 2016, signed by former mayor Richard Klein. Prior to this, in 1960, and later in 1980, Menlo Park connected with Galway, including a visit with former mayor Peg Gunn. This year's mayor of Galway, Ireland is, is named Nile McNellis. He would have liked to have been here today, as several prior mayors have been here during the St. Patrick's Day holiday, but instead, prepared a short video, which I'd now like to share with you.
Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody, and to the mayor of Menlo Park and to your fellow councilors. Please accept my apologies for not being able to travel on this occasion to celebrate, which is our national holiday, when the whole world turns green. Everything from Niagara Falls to the Golden Gate Bridge, to the Empire State Building, the London Eye, the pyramids, and the Great Wall of China are all green for this weekend when we celebrate how important the Irish community is of all. And it's how important you are as one of our seven sister cities that we're so proud to be able to call friends and see the opportunities that exist for us in the moment. to be able to call friends and see the opportunities that exist for us in the moment. To, to Jim Lewis, invited me, and to Jerry Hanley, who's over there from Galway at the moment and is attending the unveiling of the new gates, 100 years after they, they last came down, replicas of the Galway gates that we have in Menlo Park. I think it's strong that we do this, it's very important for our sister-city relationship where we can achieve so much through trade, education, and also through culture, which is a key part of actually bringing somebody together. And they say that a country without any culture is a country that has no soul, and that's why we're so proud that next year that during the European Capital of Culture, that we become the center, not just for Ireland but the entire of Europe, when we celebrate the European Capital of Culture and bring so many different nationalities and organizations together, and especially at this crossroads where Europe faces as we go into Brexit at the moment and looking at the UK withdrawing from the European Union. But this is why the European Year of Culture would be so good for us. We've also this year been voted, as you know probably, the, the, one of the top 29 destinations in the world by National Geographic to visit. No other city in the United Kingdom or the Republic of Ireland got on that list. So if you haven't visited before, you're very welcome to come over and experience some of the fun. And again, Alone Planet voted this year as one of the world's most friendliest cities. So that's something that I know that you'll be guaranteed, a big cable of fortune, 100,000 welcomes when you visit the Galway city. Again, I hope today goes really well and the celebrations of opening the new gates and I really think that it's a great way to actually celebrate our sister cities and I believe that we should be doing more and working harder together to achieve a lot more friendships and business relationships and we should explore in a way that we actually use our relationships in a stronger way for it. And I look forward over the next coming years, hopefully after the elections in May, that I'll be able to continue doing that as well for us. So mayor, city councillors, happy St. Patrick's Day, enjoy the fun, and I hope that, you know, that we see each other soon again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Matt Henry with time donated from Rose Bickerstaff. Good evening, Mr. Henry.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Matt Henry, I live in Menlo Park, District 1. Last week, a suggestion was made about starting a discussion about the merger of the Ravenswood and the Sequoia School Districts. Now this suggestion was made with the full knowledge of two things. First, Bellhaven's longtime desire to be in the Menlo Park City School District. And second, the results of this merger would place an additional obstacle to blocking the path for Bellhaven to get in the Menlo Park City School District. One of the insidious things about racism in a polite society is how it creates the illusion that racism isn't an issue. Well, to the residents and to this council, the city of Menlo Park has a race-based segregated school system and the city of East Palo Alto does not. And Bellhaven is caught right in the middle. Like it or not, Menlo Park's first obligation is to the betterment of its residents, even if they look different or speak different. What should be on the agenda for discussion is how best to integrate District 1 into the Menlo Park City School District because District 1 is in the city of Menlo Park. East Palo Alto is a completely different city. It is insulting and arrogant for Menlo Park to think they can solve East Palo Alto's problems and make the residents of Bellhaven part of East Palo Alto's problem. It's not fair to East Palo Alto and it's not fair to Bellhaven. Now Bellhaven has come a long way from how it used to be. There are a lot of things we had to do first, but now we're at the point to where the educational component must kick in or our community will stagnate. Bellhaven needs a strong, stable school system with clear guidelines. The Menlo Park City School District is a good school system and it fits this bill. And if you couple that with a new library to serve as an anchor, I think that not only Menlo Park but this city would benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Our next speaker this evening is Pam Jones.
Pamela Jones, Menlo Park resident, Bellhaven neighborhood. Mayor Mueller, Mayor Pro Tem Taylor, council member Carlton Combs and Nash. I agree with the, my sentiments are with Mr. Henry and I'm so grateful that he's still willing to come here to make comments. Thank you for opening the door to providing high-quality education to every child residing in the city of Menlo Park. Every child in the city deserves access to the same quality education. It is documented since the 1993 Bellhaven Community Needs Assessment Action Plan Comprehensive Report that the residents of Bellhaven has, have expressed education as high qua, as a high priority. All subsequent surveys, reports, workshops, visionings, and studies all have education as a high priority. It is due to the same root cause of the unincorporated Menlo Park, Menlo Oaks neighborhood succession in 1976 and in 1983, a portion of the Willows and Flood Park also succeeded from the Ravenswood City School District. We are no different. In addition, 31 homes on the north side of O'Connor Street have been denied the ability to send their children to Menlo Park, probably because of the decisions made in the past that were purely about racism. The only logical solution for the Menlo Park children is to attend their neighborhood school that is a part of the Menlo Park School District. This will bring children who currently attend schools outside the neighborhood to a school they can walk to every, every day. Parents who now homeschool may have some relief. We also need to consider that there are currently five housing projects within Bellhaven M2 District 1. These five housing projects are in various stages of concept design or pending design review and have the potential build-out of 2,935 units or approximately 5,000 bedrooms. If the multifamily units attract families, that is potentially 2,000 kindergarten through 8th grade students. Given the magnitude of potential residential building within Menlo Park, this may be time to consider the Menlo Park Unified School District educating students kindergarten through 12th grade. Therefore, we must begin now to plan and implement a Menlo Park school system that promises equal access, equal access to high-quality education. This conversation must begin with the affected school districts, Ravenswood City School District and Menlo Park City School District, as well as the city councils of East Palo Alto and Menlo Park. The Samhain County School Board and state representatives should also be a part of the conversation to ensure an amiable and legislative fast-track solution. We no longer should be waiting for quality education for any child in the city of Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you. So to the last two speakers, just want to note that we have an equity in education study session set for June 16th. Any comments regarding that study session was in light of the fact of the recent petitions that were turned down for people trying to enter in the Menlo Park City School District? So there was no, there was no ulterior motive, it was a thought of how, frankly, Sequoia Unit High School District is a Menlo Park City School District. So there was no, nothing subversive about it. It was in light of the petition that recently turned down to try to solve that issue. The next speaker we have this evening is Chuck Chegada.
I am glad to get to speak with you all. I was here a few years ago speaking on homelessness, I was living in my car, and I have a, a different perspective today. I was fortunate enough to become a member of the Downtown Streets Team, which was discussed earlier, and I'm, I'm here to tell you that it's a wonderful organization. As much as I resisted joining it, I'm very, very glad I did. It helped me turn my life around. I'm now no longer homeless. I'm living in what used to be called the Armory in Sunnyvale. It was winter housing for homeless people and I lived there, you know, when it was that. And Mayor Mueller, you, you went on to discuss this, the issue of what was going to replace it, the county or the city or whomever, wasn't going to replace it. Eventually, things turned around, I'm glad to say. Mr. Semidion, Mr. Cortez, did a great job of leading a fight to get 1.2 million for a temporary replacement and now there's, not only is that winter shelter replaced, but the shelter that replaced it is a year-round shelter, which is all to the good. My main thing I would have to leave you with is I applaud the efforts you're making towards helping homeless people. The system does work. Like I say, I'm very happy with where I live right now and I have a number of neighbors living in the same building who also were homeless and whose lives are much improved. So the system does work. We mustn't think, oh, there are things wrong with it and it's terrible. There are things wrong with it. Everything can be improved, but that doesn't mean the system doesn't work. It does work. However, a gentleman who spoke a little earlier said something about clearing out homeless encampments. That's not exactly the right attitude. I, I think it would be good to, to pull back and look at all of this from, you know, way up, like we didn't, nobody thought, even Donald Trump didn't think he could become president, but guess what? He is. And we are very much more awake about the whole thing now than we were when he was running. And I hate to say this, but things could get worse. I mean, Marie Antoinette probably didn't really think there was going to be a French Revolution. Well, guess what? There was. And I hope and pray there's no such, anything like that for us, but you know what? Things happen a lot of times because you're not worried about them. We need to think of the Alone Indians who used to, for many, many generations, this was their territory. Now, white people from Europe own it and the people of color in Bellhaven and East Palo Alto are the underclass now and need to be taken into consideration. There's a great huge amount of wealth in very few pockets and a great huge amount of less wealthy people not getting the benefits. Redistribution is going to happen willingly or unwillingly.
Thank you.
Good to have it be willing. Thank you.
Good to see you again, Chuck.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Manura Crawford. Manura Crawford.
Hi, I know my name's hard to pronounce, it's Manura. You said it right.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Menlo Park for the last three years and I saw an article in the local free paper and that disturbed me when I read that some city manager, I don't know who he was, said there were no homeless people in the area. And I have been observing who the homeless people are and they're, a couple of the encampments burned down over here in Redwood City and just a couple of months ago, they were on fire and the smoke was going across the 101. What I really want to say is that homeless people are not all drug addicts and they're not all mentally ill. And I read this over and over and over. There are thousands right in this state of educated people with master's degrees, okay? And they cannot get a roof over their head because they've gone ballistic on the rent and they've gone so high that the person doesn't even make that amount of money in the, in their net income for the entire year, okay? And that happened in New York City, I was there for 13 years. They came up with the SCRI and the SPRI program. The SCRI program is for seniors 62 and over and the SPRI, the, the other one is for people under 62. And it's a mandatory program for all landlords who are collecting all this wealth. They have to set aside several apartments in their units for low-income people, okay? And they get a tax break for improvements on their building. That's what they get. They don't get handed any money, but they, it's a mandatory program and the people who come and, and they have to qualify for that program, the, the low-income seniors and disabled people, okay? And by the way, the low-income seniors and disabled seniors are getting, they're going right round, down in the gutter. I see them every day out here on the street. It bothers me when I drive down El Camino and I see 70-year-old woman out there in the rain in a doorway trying to stay out of the rain. Or they run into the Safeway store over in Redwood City or wherever they can go, they run. And most people think that homeless people live under a bush. People live in RVs, they live in cars, they live in storage lockers, they live anywhere they can go. And can you imagine, right now it's freezing outside, the wind's blowing, it's freezing. We're in here in the warm. And I saw those people in that rain we had and they were trying desperately to get out of that rain. And everybody's just enjoying their life, going to their restaurants and then, oh, the solution is to give all this money to these 501Z charities. And there's no oversight over them. It checks to see if they're using that money to do what they were supposed to do with it.
Thank you, thank you.
And I've investigated a couple of them and they're not using the money correctly. And I have to say one more thing. I found out about a meeting and it was down in the HUD office, but it was a $30 million grant from the US government for what? For housing. That's exactly what the grant was for. So they invited everybody to give their opinion, what, what should we do with this $30 million housing grant? Do you know that not one person offered housing or a, a, a reduction in the price? They wanted new curbs, new facilities for recreation, everything but housing. And this is a $30 million federal grant given to Samhain County, you know, for housing. And where is the money? That's, that's what I'm talking about. Where is the money? I heard that you guys have health districts, I found that article in your paper, and the health district is getting money from the property tax? That money is nowhere to be found.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Crawford.
That's what I'm saying, there's no oversight.
Thank you.
There has to be oversight. You're not going to solve homelessness until you make sure that those people that are taking that grant money are using it and if a person's homeless, they don't have a job, how are they going to live in Menlo Park with this kind of rent, $3,000 a month?
Thank you, Ms. Crawford, thank you for your comments this evening. We're going to go ahead now and move on to our consent calendar. Are there any more comment cards this evening, Ms. Herron? No? We're going to go ahead and move on to our consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull any of the items from the consent calendar? Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
I'd like to pull item E3.
Do you have questions for staff or?
Yes.
Okay. Item E3 is to award a construction contract to Grundel Inc., DBA raised electric for rectangular rapid flashing beacon installation at five locations. Do we have a staff member here who can speak to that? Ms. Nagaya.
Hi, Nikki, thank you. My, my first question is that the beacons were installed in 2017 and that they're in need of being replaced now?
So the existing crosswalk enhancements are in roadway warning lights and they were installed, the latest ones, in 2013. So they've, they've been in use for approximately six years now. That is shorter than our typical expectation for useful life of these devices, but unfortunately the manufacturers have discontinued these particular products and we have no way to service them at this point. So we're looking to move to a, a new enhancement instead of in roadway lights. These would be beacons mounted on poles on the side of the roadway that flash as you are crossing the street.
And are the five that are on the list the only ones from that company in the city of Menlo Park?
So we have one more device remaining. So we have one more device remaining at the intersection of Oak Grove and Merrill that is still in place. And that's proposed to be bona fide with the Station 1300 off-site improvement plans that are currently under construction. So at the end of that construction, all the existing devices will be replaced within the city.
You have a question? You can continue, but we have a public speaker on this item. Do you want to take the question? It's Pam Jones, so it's up to you. Ms. Jones.
And thank you all for your service and for sitting there and listening to the things that the community has to say. I really appreciate any work that's being done for pedestrian safety, regardless whether we're placing, you know, relatively new ones. But I'm also concerned about a citywide program because it seems to me that, for example, I noticed a child trying to cross Marsh Road at Willow at about 4:00 in the afternoon. And after three cycles, she still couldn't cross the street because cars were blocking the intersection. And as a woman was walking by, I asked her to help this young lady across the street. And she said, you know, it's like this all the time. So areas where we need safety for bicyclists and pedestrians, all of those areas are critical and they need to be addressed. The other one that is so terribly obvious is on the Willow Road. People trying to cross at Ivy Drive, again, they have to weave in and out through the cars in order to get across. I've never seen any police doing traffic work there. And it's those high, critical areas that need to be addressed immediately. So if we can address the, replace ones that are only, how many years old? If it's 1907, 19, 2013, what, those are what, five years old? Yeah. If we can replace five-year-old ones, why can't we put new ones up in areas that are more critical? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mayor Protem Taylor.
So to follow up on the, on the public comment, it's just thinking about the city of Menlo Park as a whole. And I know that there's a citywide crossing policy. And just thinking about areas that have, I believe, we're up to about 70,000 cars a day passing through some areas of our city. And just thinking about, there's, there's five that are being replaced. Are there, are there other areas of the city that have been identified where you're going to install a safe crossing?
So the, these particular devices, we tend to use at intersections or where we call uncontrolled crossings. So there's no stop sign or traffic signal that otherwise moderates traffic to help people get across the street. And so there are a number of other uncontrolled intersections across the city. And the step that we're currently taking is to look at the conditions of those crossings, evaluate them against our crosswalk policy that you referenced. The council had adopted that, and I believe, 2015. And so that sets the standard for when we paint a crosswalk, when we add flashing beacons to enhance it, or take other steps to make it more visible. So we're currently doing that assessment to look at the rest of the uncontrolled crossings. And I know there are a number in District 1 that we had shared with the city manager and I believe had shared with you earlier today. So we will be looking at those for additional enhancements and making sure that we can add those in future budget cycles as well.
I appreciate your comment, Nikki, but just to reiterate, it's New Bridge in Chillicothe, Hamilton and Carlton, and Chillicothe and Hamilton. And Hamilton and Carlton does not have a stop sign. And because the stop signs were moved on Hamilton, and so, and the amount of traffic, that's usually a street that gets, where traffic is backed up for probably about three or four blocks for, from through traffic. But I just want to just press upon you the desperate need for safety, safety measures for safe crossings in that area. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Can I, all right, so can I have a motion for the entire consent calendar?
All right, just so I clarify, so are we, regarding that item, is it back with the consent?
E3 is back with the rest, right. I didn't, I didn't pull E3 out of, so we're moving E1, E2, E3, and E4? Assuming there's no other questions? All right, can I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great. So we're going to go ahead and move on to our regular business item. First one of the evening is item F1, Approval of the Seventh Amendment to the Agreement of Services for City Attorney William L. McClure. We have a public speaker on the item, Ms. Bramlett.
Good evening, counsel. I have three main points related to the topic. The first is when we have major positions in Menlo Park, I think it's good to post them and not just appoint someone in the role. We have an assistant city attorney. I think it would be a mistake to not have an open process looking for a new person. The second point I have, our attorney McClure's pending retirement is an opportunity to look at the role in a new way, in a more aspirational way, in a more proactive way. And I wrote you about this, and I want to suggest it here. I really liked the example from the city of Portland. And I specifically like a number of their goals that seem so tied to issues that I hear about when I come to these meetings. One of them, one of their strategic goals, first, they have a vision for the department that they have a commitment to equity and stewardship of the public trust. And that they want to ensure that the official actions of the city, its elected officials and employees comply with the law. So they actually have strategic goals with, you know, tactics related to them and measurement. And I think this is a wonderful example for Menlo Park. And, you know, something that we can all learn from. One area that I especially think is important to perhaps clarify with the public, is our city attorney's office a place we can go to when we inadvertently or directly learn about possible violations of California or other laws? I mean, I want staff and counsel following the laws. It's important to me. And so if we write about something, and I have written about four matters and actually met with the attorney about one, I don't have any response related to the outcome. And, you know, I just think that ought to be taken very seriously. And the office be a beacon, if you will, for ethics and, you know, just, just to increase the public trust. My final point is, he has a lot of institutional knowledge, including of public-private partnerships. And there doesn't seem to be any documentation of that, of these, at the city's website. And so before people leave roles where they have all that, I think it's important that we start getting that information down. Because I understand we have about 50, but I can't find any documentation related to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. Okay, do we have any other, any questions from council on this item? Okay. Councilmember Combs.
Actually, in responding to the public comment and certainly not wanting to put the city attorney on the spot, but certainly this has been something that's out there and just so we can sort of confirm it on the record. Have you actually announced your plans to retire? Just so we can sort of, you know, make sure this is, this is out there in a clearly public form, if it is, or if it's fake news?
Sure. I mean, I have been certainly open with the council and the city manager and other senior staff that it's kind of my goal, aspirational goal, to probably retire by the end of this calendar year. And that's kind of my goal. Whether that happens or not is really up to the council and, you know, how I feel at the time, I guess. But that's kind of my plan. And so I have been public that's kind of, I have this, I've been city attorney for 20, over 25 years. And I would like to slow down the practice. I don't intend to retire completely from the practice of law, so.
Totally fair. And so, and again, it was some time ago, but it has come up as, as an issue. Do you, what was the process for your, your being hired as, as city attorney?
Sure. So I was the assistant city attorney. I've been doing work for the city for 40 years. I've been the actual city attorney for 25. The two prior city attorneys were partners in our law firm, in the law firm that I joined. Jack Jorgensen was city attorney for 25 years. Jack Cosgrove took over from him in 1985 to 1993. And during that period of time, I was the assistant city attorney and acting city attorney off and on for the last couple of years that he was city attorney. I staffed all of the city council meetings and planning commission meetings. I did the planning commission meetings for all eight years, but the city council meetings for the last couple of years because he had some health issues. So the process that they went through was to kind of look around and see what, they didn't want to go in-house and hire a full-time city attorney, which would actually probably be multiple attorneys, like some of the other cities that have in-house counsel. And they wanted to do contracts, so they looked around at available law firms that were local, close by, and then turned around and, and basically hired me. They didn't interview any other attorneys or law firms. They kind of looked around at the CVs for the attorneys that could potentially do the same kind of work.
Totally fair. And then my, my final question and sort of following up on public comment, what's your sense of the, so obviously of this idea of the city attorney as the city's attorney, the city is your, your client. And I think the, the public comment got to this idea of the city attorney also as a sort of public advocate or ombudsman. Give me some sense of your thinking along those lines. Is that how you view the role? Or is it, is it you as, as the city attorney specifically and not as this sort of catch-all source for, for, you know, issues that, that people may have or concerns or?
Sure.
Just so we can, you know, have some clarity in the public record.
Sure, absolutely. So, I mean, the role of the city attorney is set forth in, in the government code and as set forth in our municipal code is to, I work for the city council, under the direction of the city council. I do not work for the city manager or any city staff, but provide all of the legal guidance to the city council, city manager, city staff about city matters. And, and that's who I report to, sets what my work program is, the budget for the city attorney, legal services, et cetera. And there are a bunch of statutory functions or duties of a city attorney in that role. I certainly do, so I'm not, don't act as an ombudsman, but in terms of I do interact with the public, public bring issues to me. Sometimes there are various different responses to those because sometimes they involve legal matters that could present legal jeopardy to the city. And so my client is the city, not the members of the public. And so it, it sometimes can be a, because of the attorney-client privilege and the confidentiality of certain matters, sometimes it's not possible to give information to people in the public that would be potentially harmful to the city or could expose the city. So it's, it's a, it's a fine line role. But I certainly do take, respond to a lot of inquiries from the public about issues, sometimes the press, you know, et cetera, in that role.
Thanks.
Any other questions? No? Councilmember Carlton, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
All right. Can we go ahead and have a motion, do a motion?
I move.
I have a second.
I second.
Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great. All right, so we're going to move on now to item F2, the Biannual Review of the El Camino Downtown Specific Plan and Direction on Plan Amendments. This evening, just so if you've come here this evening for this item, so you know, we're going to go ahead and hear the item, the staff report on the item this evening. We're also going to hear public comment on it. And then we're going to go ahead and continue it to our next meeting. Reason being, we have a bunch of new council members and we want to go ahead and take some time to take in the information and prepare a robust discussion for our next meeting. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and introduce assistant, excuse me, sorry. And I need to note that due to city attorney McClure's recusel on the item, Eric Phillips from Goldford Blar Blitman will advise the city council. Assistant Community Development Director Deanna Chow and Senior Planner Karina Sandmeyer will make the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Karina Sandmeyer. I'm senior planner with the planning division. And I'll be giving you a presentation tonight on the El Camino, El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Review. So for some background, the specific plan was adopted in 2012, and the plan requires a regular review. So the first review occurred in 2013, and there was a second review in 2015. And then April last year, we brought the review to the city council and staff received direction to reach out to advisory commissions, as well as the fire district and school districts. And a recommendation was received from the EQC to include green design standards within the plan that are similar to the Connect Menlo. And then the city council goal setting in March 2019 placed the specific plan review as a work plan item. So the specific plan includes development limits. So for the commercial development, the limit is 474,000 net new square feet. Currently, projects have been approved for 397,785 square feet of commercial space. And so that is 84% of the development cap. For residential, the specific plan provides a cap of 680 net new units. Projects have been approved for 489 residential units, so that's currently at 72% of the So six projects within the plan have been approved at a bonus level. And two of those have paid into a public amenity fund. Those two are 1020 Alma Street and Station 1300. The current balance of the fund is over $1 million, and an additional 1.05 million is due from Station 1300 prior to occupancy. So for the outreach we conducted, informational updates were provided to the Environmental Quality Commission and the Complete Streets Commission last year. And in June of last year, there was also a study session at the Planning Commission. Feedback we received there was to increase housing in the planned area with a focus on affordable housing. We also received feedback to foster retail development. And that could involve allowing small retail and commercial projects above the development cap. Additional public feedback was also received, and that included sustainability measures and that those should be, that those should be increased in the plan, as well as to improve the jobs-housing balance. We went to the Housing Commission for a study session in July of last year. Feedback we received included a desire to increase the residential cap and to facilitate housing through a number of proposals. Those included parking requirements, so that would be reducing parking requirements for certain projects or in certain areas, or even eliminating them in some cases, possibly raising height limits. So for example, along Santa Cruz Avenue currently, most of the area has a 38-foot height limit. So if something, if that was increased, it might allow additional residential development. There was also a discussion of the level of review, so that would mean some projects might go through an administrative process instead of a discretionary process. There was discussion of expanding the plan boundaries to include more parcels within the plan, as well as conversations about city-owned property being used for residential development. development. So we also reached out to the fire district and the school district. We sent them letters outlining the process and asking for feedback. So from the Sequoia Union High School District, we, we received feedback today. They expressed concerns regarding increased school enrollment, increased traffic, and, as well as pollution. The Menlo Park City School District also expressed some concerns they have regarding increased school enrollment without additional funding. They requested a meeting with city staff, and so that occurred in September of last year. The Menlo Park Fire Protection District also reached out, and they expressed their concerns regarding density and height, as well as massing of structures along El Camino Real and into the downtown, as well as the lack of water storage backup for downtown in case of a natural disaster. So staff is requesting direction from city council and a number of questions. One is whether the residential and/or commercial cap should be increased. And if so, the location of the increased residential density or commercial density, should it be along, adjacent to the Caltrain Station or throughout the planned area, as well as the possibility of enhanced sustainable and green development standards. And if so, which specific standard should be looked at? I mentioned the public amenity fund, so that was originally developed for public spaces and infrastructure, but it could be used for other uses if there is a desire to do so. We're also seeking direction on the possibility of increasing development standard flexibility. So as I mentioned, maximum building height would be one of those. Density and unit per acres could be looked at, parking standards and reducing minimum parking requirements. And also, there could be additional flexibility to encourage increased affordable housing units. We had long-term goals from the review in 2015, so we're seeking direction on if those should still be pursued. One of those is hotel incentives. Another is encouraging housing. Also on the list is preserving small businesses and retail uses and a mixed-use parking structure. So even though the possibility of a parking structure may move off the long-term goal list, we wanted to see if there was still, get some feedback if there's still interest in that. And so the mixed use could be parking and an entertainment use, or parking and some other use. And so for next steps, so tonight, we're giving an overview of the plan and direction we're seeking. And then at a following hearing, we will be getting direction on if there's changes that we should be making. Once we have that direction, the changes would be reviewed by staff, and we would look at if consultant help would be needed, and we would start an RFP process. Then a scope of work would be developed, and we would present that at a future city council or planning commission meeting. Following that, we would analyze the proposed changes and look at the environmental review required, and that would likely be an environmental impact report. Next, we would bring the changes to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation, and then back to city council for review and action. And then finally, we would make the changes to the specific plan document. So that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. So I think what we're going to do now is I'm going to go ahead and take public comment, and then based on where we are time-wise, I might open it up for, if the council has some clarifying questions, but not get into full discussion until our next meeting. So we have, does that work for you to say? So we have, one, two, three, four, six speakers. Our first speaker this evening is Lynn Bramlett.
Hello again. I have a few comments on the plan. First, I think it's important to improve public outreach for any major development-related plan. The report may have been reviewed by some commissions, but I suspect the general public is completely unaware that our downtown is being discussed. I also ask if the downtown merchants were asked their opinion about what, what, what is their vision for the downtown. And I think it's important to have opportunities to have information explained in a clear way, and our ability to ask questions in a more informal and interactive environment. You know, three minutes up here really isn't enough, and most of what I heard was all about getting your opinion, staff working, present it, and it just, you know, I think we could improve that. A second, I think the report could have done a better job of including public input that they got. I did read over the letters from the schools. I did read the fire chief's letter. There were some very specific actionable suggestions that I didn't see incorporated, that, that went beyond what you're being asked to consider. The report itself, I found it confusing, and I know these documents are hard to write, and they take a lot of time. But it, I didn't see it tied to a broader vision of our downtown, even a working vision based on what we want to see. It rambled. It could be more concisely written. I think active verb voice would help, and visual information would help. So I'm really happy that you're not going to make a decision tonight. I think we need more time, more interactive, and more thinking about what, what we want that downtown looking like before getting into the details of possibly more development or housing and, and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. Our next speaker this evening is Angie Evans. Came back in just in time.
Hi. So I'm Angie Evans. I work for the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. Tonight, I've come to support the recommendations from Menlo Together. The letter that they've written, that we have written, has more details about the policy solutions. But I wanted to talk about land. I wanted to kind of make a note about that. It's incredibly, here in the peninsula, we're, we're all fighting over a very limited amount of space. That's incredibly clear when we look at the downtown specific plan. The land value here is so high, and we need to do a few things. First, we need to look at putting affordable housing downtown. We need to find a site for that. That needs to be a priority. We need to embrace creative solutions like affordable homes in the downtown library and parking garage remodels. We have examples in Burlingame and San Mateo. And given the limited space, we have to look at changing height limits and increasing density. And so I know that feels a little bit abstract, changing height limits, increasing density. So I actually brought a few props. I'm going to use this table. So, I have two jars. I'll speak really loud. I have two jars. Oh, that's even better. So, in the first jar, in the first jar, I've got eighty homes. Now I have this second jar with eighty homes. If land is so valuable, we know that there's a really easy, clear solution that we have to talk about, and that we often ignore or push to the side because it's politically difficult to have that conversation. But we know we have to have it. So, we don't have to go up to twenty stories like this one, but we have to find a way to put more housing on that little bit of land that we have. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Our next speaker this evening is Patty Fry.
Hi, Council. I'm very happy that you are reviewing the specific plan right now. A lot has happened since it was first created in the depths of, after the recession. The vacant lots are now being built on, and that's really good. But I think this is a really good time to look again at the vision and see if it still holds. I personally think it does as a long-term thing, but I think it's a good scorecard for you to see whether or not it's still guiding what is happening here. I don't think everything is because we have a worsened housing crisis. There are very few public improvements. We still have challenges with pedestrians and bikes getting around. So I think it's really good, even though we're now at, according to the staff report, ninety-four percent of the non-residential development is already in play. Seventy-five percent of the housing that was planned is already in play. So I suggest that you take a look right now and begin to first identify some short-term actions that can help things get better. You could do a grade card, a simple grade card, on what you would like to see happen, or what you thought was going to happen, and to understand whether the rules that are in the plan actually are leading us where the vision wanted us to go. It, it really isn't anymore because the world has changed, and that's very, very typical. So it's time to change some of those rules, and I think some of that can be done quickly without EIRs. For example, within the caps for non-residential and residential, and within the limits of the public benefit bonus maximums, a lot can happen. The maximum base-level development trigger could be changed. There could be requirements that are different about the maximum amount of office that's allowed. All these things could promote more housing. That's the one thing that I think really needs to be paid attention to first within the rules. I think you also need to think, do we really need more hotels? Do we need to incent that? Originally, it was to provide, provide the funding for parking garages, but those aren't planned right now. So maybe that shouldn't be a highest priority, but maybe other things should be. So I think that with our current jobs housing crisis, we're in a hole. Don't keep digging. Fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fry. Our next speaker this evening is Karen Grove.
Thank you. So I'm Karen Grove. I'm on the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking for myself. I also want to echo the Menlo Together letter. I helped write it as well. So I want to second that. I noticed that the presentation did not mention that the Housing Commission talked about affordable housing, and that must be an oversight because we talk about that all the time. So I would like to personally say that I would like us to prioritize affordable housing and as part of the downtown specific plan. I do think we should raise the cap. One of the things we've talked about in Housing Commission was noted that we could expand the definition of the downtown specific plan to, you know, a couple of streets out where there are a lot of older apartments. We have to be very, very careful when we do that to not cause displacement, and to not cause, if we upzone it, a rise in property values that doesn't get realized in actually increasing density and, and providing more homes. So it's tricky, but I think it's worth looking at. For anti-displacement policies, things to look at are called right-to-remain, where if an apartment unit is redone and, and made into more units, the current tenants are given someplace else to live for a while, and then they have the opportunity to come back at a rent that they can afford, and that the developer makes up for that with the other units or in some way. I think we should, we should keep the off-site, the parking structure on the table because it may facilitate housing on Santa Cruz Avenue above the retail, because some of the shops are so narrow. What I've heard people say is you can't include parking because there's no place to turn around your car. So that may facilitate housing above retail, which is a very villag-y, charming way to have a downtown. And the affordable housing, the land is so precious. We have very little of public land, and we will not ever get affordable housing on private land because it's too expensive. So please give affordable housing the highest priority for the use on our publicly-owned lands. I think that's out. Oh, and just to caution, we've been looking at our Housing Element Progress Report, and if we don't do that, I don't think we're going to meet our RENA numbers by the end of the cycle for the low-income affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grove. Our next speaker this evening is Diane Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and council members. My name's Diane Bailey. I run a community nonprofit called Menlo Spark, working towards a carbon-free and more sustainable Menlo Park in the region. And we're really happy to see the downtown plan moving forward this year. I think this is a really important opportunity to extend the many smart planning standards that were developed very carefully under Connect Menlo for the Bayfront and Bellhaven area here to downtown. I also want to note support for the Menlo Together letter and the four very important points in that letter that all relate to sustainability. That's adding housing downtown and improving the jobs housing balance, reducing solo driving, eliminating carbon from new buildings, which is what I usually talk about, and also trying to avoid displacement. On the housing, in addition to being recommended by the Housing Commission, I just wanted to note that there's sort of an equity issue on the height limits. And I would really encourage you to look at extending the height limits downtown to match those in the Bayfront area. Bringing more people downtown to live is really important to reducing solo driving, because this is such a transit-rich quarter, and also because of the new Peninsula Bike Way, which provides new mobility choices. On green building standards, these are recommended by the Environmental Quality Commission, and I believe there's a commissioner here to speak to you about that. It's such an important opportunity to really welcome new development, but not the carbon emissions that come with the new development. For some of the recent developments downtown, we've worked really hard to try to get agreements with those developers to build without fossil fuels, and it would be a lot more efficient to just use the standards that already apply in Connect Menlo. And I believe that was integrated into the development agreement for the Stanford Middle Plaza Development. We have a new guide. It's a zero-carbon commercial construction guide, and we'll be circulating this to planning commissioners and the council and staff as well. And this just details many examples of developments that have already built without fossil fuels, using heat pump technology and all-electric buildings, and taking advantage of our very clean electric power. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and I hope that you will work with the Environmental Quality Commission on these standards. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker this evening is Tom Cabot. Or is it, is it Cabot? Tom Cabot. My apologies, Mr. Cabot.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Tom Cabot, a thirty-five-year resident of Menlo Park, and I, I have the honor of serving on the Environmental Quality Commission, but tonight, I'm just speaking to you as a resident. I'm really glad that you get a chance to look at these plans in a cyclical nature because things have been changing so fast around us on the climate problem. It, the, the science is developing, and a lot of the, the science is structured in a way where it's reported out through the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change in a way that kind of mutes the message down to a lower common denominator. And so what happens is even the warnings they give us are, are behind the times for what the state of the science is for, for how quickly things are getting out of control. So they've told us, we have roughly eleven and a half more years to get on top of the problem. And the way the state's trying to do it is to try to reduce emissions by forty percent over that time, down to, down to the year twenty, thirty, a forty percent reduction. What's happening with that reduction is there won't really be room in the emissions budget for natural gas in buildings. Natural gas turns out to be a much bigger problem than we thought. It, it's not as clean as we thought. It, it, the science has shown that now it has a global warming potential for each pound of it that's eighty-four times as big as a pound of CO2. So it's, So it's just a much better reflector of the infrared radiation because of the way that molecule vibrates at the same frequency of the wavelength of infrared. So it's reflecting it back. So the other thing we've learned is the gas system is leaking much more than was self-reported by the gas suppliers and the gas utilities. All of this learning that's going on about the science and about the facts of the system leaking more than companies self-reported it leaking is showing that we, as policymakers and concerned citizens, need to help transition to not letting people make the mistakes that inertia would lead to. Developers and contractors want to do again next year what they did last year, and if we don't signal them that there's not room to do next year what you did last year, they'll just keep doing it. So that's why we need to really push for gas-free buildings, buildings without gas in them, because we don't want to have them put in gas and spend all that money doing it and then have to spend the money taking it back out again. So it's nice that you're able to look at this on a planning basis and then incorporate these improved standards and really look at creative ways to get gas out of buildings, maybe giving development allowances to gas-free buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Next speaker this evening is Jen Wilson.
Good evening, council. So today I was on a fifth-grade field trip to the NASA Ames Center, and an environmental scientist was talking to the kids. He asked where we came from, and we said Menlo Park. And then he said, "Well, I came from Tracy. I commute about two hours a day each way from Tracy." And this is an environmental scientist. We have, as you know, a major housing and transportation crisis. The village character that was a top priority for our city 10 years ago, whenever the DSP was originally envisioned, is still important, but we also really need to look at these issues of housing. And I would really beg you to ask staff to give you some more data. We need to know what the current jobs-housing ratio is in our city. We need to know it for the downtown-specific area. We need to know it for the Connect Menlo area, what's being proposed. We need to know it citywide. We need to look at the assumptions that are being made in those ratios. I know that some of the assumptions that went into the DSP assume like 300 square feet per employee in some of the office buildings. Tech companies, incubators, those all cram people into office space. So you might be looking at a severely different ratio, and we need to look at the numbers potentially, you know, high, medium, and low, but some different assumptions. We also need to ask ourselves, why haven't the developers been taking advantage of the bonus levels that were offered? Specifically, Greenheart and Stanford didn't, not only took advantage, not only did not take advantage of the bonus levels in terms of the density for their housing, but it doesn't even look like they utilized the entire base level for housing. So why was that? What are you incentivizing? How can you change that and make potentially housing more attractive than office? Because we need to do more to correct the jobs-housing imbalance. In terms of locations to focus on, pay attention to the Big Five complex, which I believe could potentially, you know, go all office, and look at how that can be retained for housing or potentially also a mixed use in retail. When you're looking at how to revise the downtown specific plan, look at what direction would prompt long-term EIRs versus things that could be done sooner than later. Because of the housing crisis, we don't want to wait too long and study for two years and then have there be a huge permitting run happen. So you need to look both at short-term and long-term. As the fire district and the school district is begging you, please include them at the table. Those are obviously key stakeholders. But basically, I'm just asking you to get more data, ask a lot of questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen. Our next speaker this evening is Adina Levin.
Good evening, council members. My name is Adina Levin. I'm a resident of Menlo Park, and I'm going to start speaking as an individual and then mention some other relevant affiliations. So I am a resident. I live about a block and small change from the downtown. I chose that as a place to live because I wanted to be walking distance from stores and services. I wanted to be close to public transit. I own a car, and I didn't want to have to use a car for the necessities of everyday life. And while this is not something that works for everyone in our society, it is something that I am not the only person that wants. I think there's information showing that there is pent-up demand for that sort of living. And with that, I'd like to echo what you have heard from many people here and the recommendations of the Housing Commission and other commissions and, you know, previous versions of this conversation in terms of supporting more housing in the downtown plan area for a variety of different levels of income, including affordable housing, and to work on assessing what are the barriers to enabling that housing, including the limit, including height, density, and parking, and looking to change those parameters in order to facilitate more housing. Like to echo what some more people said, which is that in the 10 years or so since the start of the previous downtown plan process, the housing crisis has gotten much more severe. And while I hear, you know, in the staff report saying this is what the community wanted in the past, the mix of what the community wants today may well have changed, and we should really be looking for today's needs and concerns, including, so as someone who's living near downtown and would, you know, look at taller buildings, that is a situation that I would be perfectly happy to live with, to have taller buildings and more housing. You know, back when we were doing Connect Menlo, a few years after, we said, okay, we can go to 70 feet for housing to have more housing near jobs, which is important. And similarly, I think that we should be looking at, you know, similar decisions for having more housing, all the more so near public transit and services. And we should be looking at the transportation mix, especially if we need to have shared parking for redeveloping smaller parcels and enabling housing. We should be potentially looking to keep public parking on the table as we analyze all the access needs in order to potentially have a garage to support the development of mixed-use housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker this evening is Rachel Horst.
Good evening. I'm also, well, I'm a resident of downtown adjacent in District Four, and so I would also echo that, that I am also comfortable with the density. You will not be blocking the sun from my zucchini plants, so it's okay. All I'm going to say is, tonight, I'm going to say tonight, is that to really listen to that feedback that staff brought up from the commissions last year. I'm speaking as an individual, but I've read, you know, the recommendations of all the commissions, and we just don't want that to get lost because they spend a lot of time coming up with that stuff. And there's some good stuff, and there's some very technical stuff, but please read it and use it moving forward. Sometimes these things kind of disappear into the ether. And just on the point of the housing and commercial caps, I've been thinking about caps and going over caps, staying under caps. And, you know, let's be honest, that's a line in the sand that could easily get washed away with the next big wave. And it's really about this jobs-housing imbalance that we keep hearing about. It's not some esoteric thing. It's a ratio, and it's well-known that the peninsula is a big offender on that. So, you know, the jobs-housing imbalance, our RENA numbers, our carbon emissions, you know, vehicle trips, these don't have any feelings or aesthetic preferences, so in a way that kind of makes things easier, and those should really be our boundaries. And just my number-one point as a housing advocate is always going to be, we need to look at our public lands for affordable housing. I know it's been said before, but it needs to be said over and over again because it's just not possible otherwise. Land is too expensive, and where do we plan to put this stuff otherwise? So I just like to think about it. You get what you zone, and you get what you incent, and we need to get much more creative and make a move because we're not getting what we need, and we have the planning tools to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Meg McGraw, Chair. Evening, Meg.
Hi, council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this. I'm the chair of the Housing Commission, but I'm not speaking in regards to that. I'm actually going to speak, I am resident of Menlo Park, but about what I do for my day job, which is I'm an affordable housing finance consultant, and I work primarily in the city and East Bay, and I've done several projects down here on the peninsula. And I work at a nonprofit, and what we do is we work with other nonprofits, and we help them do all their financing for their projects. And so I've been doing this here in California for 18 years this May, and before that, I was in Seattle for a couple of years. And I will tell you that probably about 80% of the projects that I work on are projects where the locality has been involved in either the provision or the purchase of the land. It's so difficult now because of the housing crisis, obviously, but just because of the cost of land for nonprofits and other intentional housing providers to build affordable housing. So that being said, I just want to encourage what has been said many times tonight, which is that we have an opportunity here in Menlo Park if it is decided that we want to have more housing downtown, which I think is, makes so much sense, that we do consider very carefully accessing the city-owned land to do that. And specifically, I know there was a whole lot of discussion around the land here, but also the parking lots, and looking at that as an opportunity. I'm actually working on a project right now in the city of San Mateo where they're doing that very thing. They've put out an RFQ. They have land that's parking lots. They're going to do a parking structure to move the parking, and then they're going to build affordable housing. And included in that affordable housing, not only for the community with preferences for the locals that live there, but also housing for public employees and teachers. And so I'd love to tell you how that project works out. I think it's going to work out great. It's really an exciting project, and I think it's something that we should really consider doing here. So anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Evan Golden.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. I'm a downtown-adjacent resident. I'm maybe three parcels off, but I'll count myself. And I really wanted to encourage you guys to take this opportunity to improve my neighborhood. The two closest businesses to me are Arby's, well, what used to be Arby's, and Starbucks. They are both closed. I am getting pretty tired of having a dreary neighborhood that, you know, the closest businesses are shuttered. I want to have, I want to live in a vibrant place where I can walk to restaurants. I don't have to drive places. Can walk to, actually, I can walk to the grocery store. Thank you. But I wanted to encourage you guys to really think comprehensively about this downtown plan. In one fell swoop, we could really tackle the housing crisis, congestion, climate change, and make it more vibrant downtown. And you can make one-car households a lot more common in Menlo Park. By living downtown, my wife and I were able to give up one of our cars and live in a one-car household, which has been great. I'd love to see that become more common, and we can only do that if we concentrate our new housing downtown rather than spreading it out. So I would encourage you to, I'd echo a lot of the other speakers tonight, and would encourage you to raise building heights in the downtown area, to redevelop our pretty large surface parking lots, encourage more housing downtown. I think I saw on the plan that there's 680 units of housing being proposed. I think there's like 500 housing units on my block alone, so that seems like a really small number to me. And I'd also encourage us to concentrate more office development downtown. It makes me pretty sad to see the huge new buildings going up in Bay Shore on the far side of freeway where I know that most people are going to drive, and then we're going to be here in two years talking and wondering about why there's so much congestion. If we put those offices downtown, we can get a lot more people to not drive to those offices. So I really hope that's where we'll put them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that's, any more public comment cards? No. Okay. We've had our staff presentation, so we can go ahead now and move to some council questions. If council has some clarifying questions, they want our staff that's going to help them think about the item between now and the 26th. Councilmember Carlton, do you want to go first? Do you have any questions?
Um, let me look. I have a lot of comments because I thought we were going to be dealing with directly.
Yeah, we're just, we're not, we're not doing-
I do have one question.
Okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
No, it's all right. If an extraordinary project comes forward that needs more FAR or needs some kind of change in height, whatever, in that area, does council have the ability to raise that zoning limit at the time? Do we have to, do we have to make sure that how we're zoning things now is going to last for two years? Or if something specifically comes forward, does council have the ability to deal with things as they come forward?
So thank you. I'm Deanna Chow, Assistant Community Development Director. So in terms of if there's specific increases over the cap, that would be something that would have to come through a plan amendment and a much larger process. If it's something in an individual project, so with regards to height, that is something that could come for a conditional development permit to increase the height? So, and then the FAR, though, could not be changed. That is something that is built into the plan, and you can't change the FAR for a particular project. In terms of density, the density is set. If there is, for affordable levels, though, you could take advantage of our below-market-rate program, which would increase, it would give a density bonus for every affordable unit. You could do a market-rate unit. We also have, a project could take advantage of state density bonus law as well, which could provide additional market-rate units for every affordable unit. So that's a way to increase the density, but not, you couldn't change what's built into the plan.
So we can change pretty much everything, except remember, we made some adjustments for, I think it was the theater. So we can change everything except the FAR?
So FAR is standard in the plan. Density is also standard in the plan, but there are mechanisms that could increase the density. With the Guild Theater, there was a specific plan amendment that allowed that specific change.
But we're not allowed to do specific plan amendments for FAR?
You could, as a comprehensive change to a particular zoning district, you could look at it and evaluate if you wanted to increase the densities or the FARs. That is completely within an amendment to the plan that the council can consider.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Are you all set, Kat?
Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs, I see your light is on.
Yeah, thanks. Just one question. So in the, you know, the tally of square footage as we sort of hit the caps, you have what sort of has been approved and a building permit issued. In some cases, obviously, those projects have been completed. And then there are these pending projects, like, for instance, the Hampton Inn. So for those projects that are pending, do they, like, hold that square footage based on them being pending and on your list and sort of on your radar? Or could a project that you don't know of at this moment, could it come in and go through the phase to completion and essentially take up some of the square footage that you have as for these pending projects? Do you get the question? I want to get a sense of, at which point does the owner of a parcel have some right to that square footage that we're saying that they get under the specific plan?
Yeah, so if entitlement application is submitted, it doesn't hold the square footage. It's when the building permit is issued. The exception would be the 500 El Camino Real project because they had a development agreement. So they are set with their square footage as in residential units, even though the building permits haven't been issued.
And just one clarification. With regards to Station 1300, was it just the office space that's in bonus, or is it the office space and the residential component that went into bonus? Because I know what Stanford there, what's proposed there is base, but I thought that certainly some portion of Station 1300 is in bonus, but I'm not clear as to whether it's just the housing or just the office or if it's both. as to whether it's just the housing or just the office or if it's both.
If there's any question we ask you don't really answer to, we can have it brought back to us at the next meeting.
Right. We're just looking at Attachment A to see if there's more clarity for you and we can bring that back for you. But just to, on Councilmember Combs's prior question regarding the development, or, you know, at what point do you have it entitled or is that remaining from the cap? So yes, it's not, it's not yours to keep, you know, just because you have an application on file, but I think once we start getting an application that would trigger it, it starts to look at the change in the environmental review. So the red flags do go up if we have more development that comes in and they're on the books because at some point, it's like which one is going to get, to go first, and then the remainder would be out of luck and would change the development, the development review process for it.
Okay, totally fair. And I just, I didn't want to put you on the spot regarding Station 1300. It just came up in public comment and I couldn't remember for myself. And so I asked, but certainly nothing to worry about.
Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question regarding outreach. I know that the city usually posts something in the almanac and then you have the little leaflets that can be collected from the planning department. But how else do you do outreach as far as meetings like this, especially about something about the downtown specific plan?
Yeah, so you did raise a number of ways that we could. We could do postings on the internet. This was just our traditional, you know, we release the notice of our agendas. And certainly when we go forward with, if we do proceed with changes to the specific plan, it would be a more robust outreach process, you know, with, similar to our past process where we would invite stakeholders in the downtown, you know, the community members, if it's up to the guidance of the council, if they want to do the oversight and outreach committee again. So there's different levels of involvement and outreach that we can do depending upon what changes are being made. But it would, it would include, it could include flyers, postcards, internet postings and such. But for this particular meeting, it was the traditional announcement of the agenda.
Okay. I have a couple more questions that do not have to be answered tonight, but just some things that came to mind. One is, is it possible to add some visuals? I know that you have a lot of great tools online on the city's website that shows the development. Not sure if it's the same for the downtown specific plan as it is for the development in District 1, but visuals. The second is, I'm not sure if this was a part of what Jim Cogan used to do, but just looking at the current vacancy rate of businesses in Menlo Park and if there's any outreach done to see why businesses are leaving. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to follow up on Mayor Protem Taylor's point about outreach, it's probably a good idea between now and the 26th to check in with some of the council members and see what they're thinking as they form their thoughts around what they're going to be advocating for change-wise, if anything. So, Councilmember Nash?
So I'm very interested in getting more data. I met with the city manager yesterday and gave him a chart of what I'd like to see. And basically, since we're coming up on the Connect Menlo as well later this month, we could have both, basically all the data from the DSP and also Connect Menlo on one sheet, looking at the residential, both what was in the original plans, what is currently approved and proposed, both for the downtown specific plan for M2 and then also other, so we can sort of get a view of the whole city, since we're doing both plans at this point, that would be really helpful. Looking at residential as far as both the units and also where the BMR units are, how we're doing on that. And also retail space, the commercial space, if possible, broken out with the life science and medical office. I gave a whole worksheet to Nick yesterday. So, and then the hotel parking spaces, the residential population, the employment. And also when we're looking at employment, if we can make sure that we're including the contractors and the service workers and not just the full-time staff, we're getting a whole picture of employment. And then if we can get the jobs housing numbers. I know there were projections in the plans and sort of, and how are we doing towards those, along with that, what calculations we're using. This, one of the speakers was talking about how those calculations have probably changed, given the different types of businesses that we're now, yeah. And I'd also like some better information on the fees. It seems like we're way, the fees are not, probably should be adjusted. If I looked at it correctly, we've got 28% of the fees at this point and 94% of the development. So why are they out of sync and can they, basically, how can we get them more in sync so that we are getting fees to recover a possible EIR and DSP plan? And then generally, how do we go about looking at using public land for housing and specifically for affordable housing? Just how do we go about thinking about that? How, and beyond public land, how can we incent housing and specifically affordable housing? And also saving retail? Because I believe, as one of the speakers said, we've lost quite a bit of retail. And how do we maintain a livable community with the appropriate amenities around and not lose more retail? Thank you.
Okay, so this is going to be both in relation to Connect Menlo and also downtown specific plan. So just, they're just general comments and you don't need to come up, but I'll just say, things I'm interested in right now, workforce housing and missing middle. I think a number I just read is that we have produced one, one middle, missing middle housing unit. So our numbers actually look really good in some areas and really bad in others. Newspaper article that I read highlighted the one, which was like, come on, guys, we've made a lot of progress in other areas. So want to talk about that, how we, how we can address that. It's been winter a long time. And for whatever reason, when it's winter a long time, it's hard to tell if it's just winter having an effect on you, but things are looking pretty grungy, it seems to me. So trying to figure out how, what we can do to address that. I know it's, my colleagues hit the big policy things. I'm thinking just aesthetically within the downtown right now and along El Camino, it just needs some work. And so it might just be that it's winter, but I, but I, we still have problems with facades falling off buildings. We have ripped facades. We have, it's just, we're not getting the improvements that I think that people were expecting to go ahead and to enjoy. And it seems like when we do do those projects, they become, the one, the one thing I'd say is like when we did the Guild, it was a one-off. When we did the, when we did the downtown street cafes, that was like a lift. And what I'd like to do is really figure out how to make the plan just work on its own. So it doesn't take your time, it doesn't take our time in order to make that happen, but it's happening organically. So that would be my comments, what I'm looking, what I'm going to be looking for next week. So if you guys could give us some, as you prepare this, prepare to have the discussion with us, some ideas around that, that would be great. Yes, Ms. Nash?
I have two more comments. And that was, when I was, in looking at the projects of Attachment A, two of them jumped out at me. And that would be the 115 El Camino Real and, oh my gosh, I lost the other one. Anyway, two of them I know have long-term tenants and they're now, those tenants are now being displaced. And so if we can, I, Nick and I, Nick and I looked at it yesterday and so I can easily give you the other project. But there are some, some projects which don't look like we're losing any residential units and in fact, we are. So I know of at least two on El Camino that where that situation is happening. And then the one other piece is just how to think about expanding the area of the downtown specific plan from, just what are the pros and cons and how would we go about doing that? Thank you.
Mr. Regueros?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would like to ask our Community Development Director, Mark Munzer, to come up and just talk through the level of information the council has requested this evening as well as timeframe. I was advised this evening that our attorney would not be able to join us on the 26th, so that may defer this longer, but I'd like Mark to walk us through that.
I was kind of thinking the same thing as this went. I was like, oh, sure, we're going to have this ready in two weeks.
So, good evening. Mark Munzer, Community Development Director. So we have some agenda management to do. There are a number of items that we need to look into, and I will be quite frank with you, to come back on 3/26 is a very heavy lift. And in light of everything else that my staff has on their plate, I don't want them to revolt and I want to be realistic. And so, and also in all seriousness, with Connect Menlo also scheduled to come back to your next council meeting, that we, we can't do both. And I want to make sure that we provide you with the information that you're requesting in a expedient manner, but also in a manner that allows us to balance the work that particularly the Planning Division has on their plate. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Just go ahead and when you guys are ready, send an email that you're ready and we'll put it on the agenda then. There's no-
Great.
Okay. Does that work for you guys?
Yes.
Yeah. Prefer that we do it thorough and that you guys have the time that you need. So just send the email when you're ready to put it on the agenda and we'll set it for the agenda then.
Okay. So then we'll still plan to come to your next meeting with our initial review of Connect Menlo.
Yeah.
And then my guess would be that contingent upon your comments, that we would follow a similar method and come back at a later date?
My guess is Connect Menlo will be the same process whereby we have the first initial meeting where the council gets to go ahead and talk about what they're interested in. And then my guess is there'll be follow-up and then we'll have to set another meeting at a later date. So that's my estimate. And I think that's, I think that's actually good for, I think that's good process. So.
That, that will be of assistance. We think that will probably work the best. One thing I would like to note on the outreach, just very quickly while I'm up here, one thing that I would encourage our staff to do to Councilmember Taylor's question, is we certainly, as we move into potentially amending the downtown specific plan and Connect Menlo for that matter, it's very important to me that we, that we do as much outreach as possible, but that we're also out where people are. That I've encouraged staff that we need to be more innovative in terms of our outreach. We need to be at the train station. We need to be at the Safeway in an appropriate setting so that we can capture as much of comment as we possibly can. So as we move forward with these plan amendments, that's something I'm, certainly, we hope we have your support and that we're going to try and move forward with.
Absolutely. Yeah, great. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, just a sort of quick question, so I can get some understanding of like, at what point does staff work sort of ends and where a more substantive sort of, you know, consultant work would begin? So like if we're talking about expanding the specific plan area or changing heights, like what does the staff report look like on that versus like, I mean, other than saying, hey, you can, you can increase heights, right? Is there, what is that analysis based on? Is it based on like the analysis that went into the initial downtown specific plan? Or is it just sort of saying, yeah, this is an option, but we really can't provide you with some great details of like how that would look or the impacts? That would be part of a process where we would engage a consultant?
I would envision any sort of major modification that involves a change in height limits or parking requirements or density units per acre would involve a consultant. What staff would do is take your feedback and then come back and make some recommendations of ranges for all of those things, get your and the community's input on that, and then likely engage a consultant. You know, any environmental work that's required would go to a consultant. So I wish I could give you a very clear answer. It's a little, it's a little amorphous, but it's generally, that's how it would work.
Yeah, totally. And then just one quick follow. So like with this idea of like sort of expanding the, the plan area, like how would you, like what would an initial sort of staff approach to that look like?
There's, there's in likelihood not that many directions to go. So we would identify other multifamily zoning districts, for example, that are adjacent to the plan and note the likely plan potential expansion area and get your feedback if that was appropriate. There's a couple other ways the plan could go in terms of extending it, but we would give you those options. And then a plan expansion would be an additional environmental review.
And the one thing I'd say as we approach this, guys, is if this is a, if this sort of major revision is something that you're interested in, the other thing that you could think about is that in your, you have four years on council, you could approach things in a staggered manner with staff and so that they're achieving within the work plan that you just approved items this year and then can take on bigger chunks next year that may require the EIR. But you could sort of, in this process, plan out how you're going to do that review in, in, obviously collaboration with staff of how they think that could work and come together nicely. So it doesn't have to be, like, you have, you have four years and trust me, the wheel, we want the wheel to move fast, but it needs to also move at a pace. So, thank you. So I think we're, Kat, did you have anything you wanted to add? Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, it takes me, it takes me a second to put my phone off mute. No, I mean, I'll have a lot of comments, but I'll save them until we're actually talking through this next week.
All right. Or when it comes back. Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Okay, so we're going to go ahead now and actually, if it's all right with everyone, just take just a five-minute break. I got to use the facilities. Discussing the establish, discussion of establishing a community housing fund to assist lower-income tenants. The Assistant City Manager, Clay Curtin, Assistant to the City Manager, Clay Curtin, and Assistant City Attorney, Kara Silva, will make the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we are moving forward with the Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance. Very quickly, the last meeting that this was discussed on February 26, you had the introduction in first reading. Tonight, we are proposing a waive the second reading and adopt the Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance. This ordinance would become effective 30 days after adoption. So that would be April 12, 2019. As of the last meeting, the direction also included the establishment of a community housing fund. And with that, a subcommittee was appointed, including Mayor Protem Taylor and Councilmember Combs. We met with the subcommittee on March 4, 2019 to discuss five elements of the fund to be established. That included the purpose, the eligibility criteria, the relocation assistance amount, how the fund would be administered, and the funding sources. Real quickly, the fund purpose was stated to assist those not covered by the Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance. The subcommittee felt that it should be focused and help those who are in danger of becoming homeless upon displacement from their current housing. So essentially, those who need the help the most. The eligibility criteria, similar to the ordinance itself, was meant to be means-tested based on area median income. The subcommittee discussed a threshold of around 50 to 60%. This chart shows the household- This chart shows the household size and what those income amounts are for the various AMIs discussed. The committee also wanted the eligibility to include that this should go to people who are not receiving other types of assistance. Those could be Section H, Section 8 vouchers, or other housing assistance. The idea was that these payments would be one-time only, not, someone would not be eligible to receive multiple payments over a two- to three-year period. It would be based on a displacement trigger. That would be including a significant rent increase, using the same definition that we discussed previously, which was CPI plus 5%. And it also, the committee felt that it should have a tenancy requirement. The subcommittee discussed 12 months minimum, which is in line with the existing 12-month lease ordinance. Regarding the relocation payment amounts, there were several ideas discussed. One was that this fund would cover the, an emergency security deposit for someone who is being displaced, based on one month of HUD fair market rent. The HUD fair market rent table on the side shows what that amount is based on the size of the unit. The alternative two was a tiered payment structure based on the length of tenancy or tenure in the unit. We discussed a period of one to three months, or anything greater than three months would be, I'm sorry, 12 to 24 months would be one month of payment on up to three months for greater than three years in the unit. Alternative three was incentive-based, and the idea here was to encourage people who receive the payments to stay local, to stay in Menlo Park, and rewarded them with an additional month based on if they were staying in Menlo Park as opposed to moving out. The next discussion topic was fund administration. We discussed whether this should be administered by a third-party nonprofit, or by, internally by staff. The subcommittee kind of saw the benefit of having staff administer it, at least initially. This would be through a pilot program, where the, the staff assigned would develop program guidelines based on the criteria set by council. This would be a way to ensure that we're able to help people right away, as soon as the ordinance becomes effective. And also, it would allow us to gather data that would help make program adjustments in the future. Or if we do end up outsourcing it to a third-party nonprofit, we would know what to ask for and what to expect. The program guidelines to be developed would include, but not be limited to, the program administrator. This would likely be a designee of the city manager, likely the deputy community development director. This person would develop the forms and informational brochures that would be used to educate the public about the fund. We'd include frequently asked questions, the payment procedures, and the appeal procedures. Regarding the payment procedures, one item noted in the staff report was the idea that if we're funding the emergency security deposit, using that alternative, that the payments would be made to the tenant's new landlord. They would show their lease of wherever they're moving to, and the payment would go to that The final piece was the funding source. During the council discussion, we talked about a wide range of funding sources, including city money, grant, and county money. Right now, we're saying initially, this would probably need to be general fund money in order to get this going right away. Below-market rate housing funds currently are restricted to very specific uses. We believe that the guidelines could be adjusted and incorporated into future BMR agreements if you chose to use that money in the future going forward to help seed this fund. We would like to start off with $100,000 initially. That would allow us to help between 10 and 30 households, if needed, based on the varying amounts of payment that have been proposed. Staff would return to the council with regular status updates as the funds are depleted, and seek direction on either replenishment or program changes. It was also discussed in previous meetings that we would request donations from others, including housing providers, their representative associations, large residential developers, and of course, the, the grant funding. Another idea for ongoing funding sources that would be more stable and predictable would be changes to the business license tax, a rental properties fee, or, as I mentioned, the potential changes to the BMR guidelines. So for tonight, we're asking you to waive the second reading and adopt the Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance, and then also provide direction on those five specific areas of how to establish the community housing fund.
Do we have any clarifying questions from council before we take public comment? No? No? Councilmember Carlton, do you have any clarifying questions before public comment?
No.
Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and move to public comment. First speaker of the evening is Ms. Judy Adams. Hi, Judy.
Hi. Thank you to the council.
If you could pull down this to...
Thank you to the council and new council members. I want to link my comments to everything that we've been discussing. That is, chronic homeless situation comes about in many ways, and one way is you lose your job, you get your health problems, you lose your house or your rental, and you find yourself in a horrible position. I'm not speaking about mental health or drug issues, but all of us are just a short step away from losing our housing. And in this expensive housing market, I think if I were to, I think I'm, as anyone else, can be close by any of these emergencies to losing our housing. So I appreciate the city council taking the effort to look into how to deal with affordable housing. What is affordable? Where are those levels? How are those numbers crunched? So that we have a diverse community of people of different incomes. Affordable, below-market rate, low income. I like to use low income because that's a little more colorful and reasonable to me. Not just a little bit below how much the average person, wherever the average is in this part of the state, but low income. So I would like anything that we could do to keep low-income housing, so that is whatever one has been mentioning, on public lands, so that would be developed. We're not asking developers who are making the big apartments available. That we keep small businesses here, however we do that, and we allow the people who work in those small businesses to be able to live here. Not just the NASA engineer who drives from Tracy, but the cook at Cook's Seafood, which is in my part of downtown, who comes from Tracy, or has multiple roommates in an apartment, sleeps on someone's floor, and only goes home on weekends. So those are all issues. So the displacement of renters happens in different ways, and anything that we can do, the most that we can do that is possible, we should do for people who lose where they live for no other reason than there's a remodel of the apartment, let's say. Or the owner decides to change it to a family residence. So anything that we can do to keep the low-income, the workers, the diversity in our community, to keep the small businesses going, and the people who work in them. And I thank you for the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Judy. Our next speaker this evening is Angie Evans.
I have no props this time. I'm not gonna say my name and all that stuff. The Housing Leadership Council pushed hard for the Housing Commission's recommendation, and we were disappointed with the weaker measure passing after over 40 people came to the meeting last month to share their stories, or two weeks ago last month, was it a week ago? I don't know. Time is squishing together. I hope you all also heard the comments that were in the Mercury News and other news sources about the Redwood City residents receiving incredible rent increases after tenant relocation assistance was passed there. Having a weak ordinance creates these kinds of things. That, that is why, when I pulled up that sign that said it could cover this many houses if those houses are income qualifying, or it could cover this many houses if, if they were income qualifying, we push for that greater number because of equity, because that is how you create good policy. Back to my thing. I'm not actually here tonight to talk about the Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance, because I know it's the second vote. I wanted to comment on the community fund that you've paired with TRA. I think you have a unique opportunity to cover those residents who don't qualify for the ordinance, to stop displacement and to keep our neighbors here. This community fund needs to cover rent burden residents, so residents at 200% of AMI, or remove the means testing altogether. We need to make sure that we're covering teachers and nurses who are spending over half of their income on rents. The fund must be broad enough that it helps people who are here. We don't want to spend our staff time, we don't want to spend our city resources on something that doesn't have a good impact, that doesn't, that doesn't help people stay here, or help people from becoming... We, we want to make sure that this policy actually does something good for people, not just that a pot of money sits somewhere. If it has too many restrictions, then it won't have the impact we want. It needs to be administered by a nonprofit with expertise in homelessness prevention and housing. And lastly, this subsidy, and this is the part I feel most strongly about, the subsidy must go directly to residents, not to new landlords. This is just bad policymaking, and it implies that renters aren't responsible enough with their income. We, we can't conflate help with education. We have to be able to meet residents where they're at. And I think providing the subsidy, having them, anybody who's gone to look for a new apartment or house anytime recently, like, first of all, you have to, like, stand there with 50 other people and try and get your application in, and then you have to hope that your application is the most competitive in that room. And then somehow, if you are trying to access this displacement fund, then you have to ask that landlord to sit and wait for a check from the city? That doesn't seem right at all. And it's insulting. Anyway, thank you. Those are all my comments.
Thank you, Angie. Our next speaker this evening is Karen Grove.
So, hello again. On, I'm Karen Grove, I'm on the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking for myself. On Monday, I went to a rally in Redwood City organized by the tenants who are being forced out by 140% and higher rent increases. Interestingly, if they are magically able to afford those rents, their landlord will have to ask them to leave because they're refurbishing their apartment building unit by unit. And if it comes to that, the landlord will have to pay relocation assistance. So, one of the loopholes that we talked about. And that just points to the importance of this community fund, because we've passed ordinance with a loophole just like that. I really appreciate, appreciate this staff report, and I love the chart at the end that shows that 35%, 45% of our residents are rent burdened. So clearly, the area median income, or any, any means test that is applied to this fund needs to be much higher than 50% or 60%. I'm with Angie. I think rather than, you know, this looks, there's this page here that talks about how it would be administered, and I wrote, wow, this looks like a lot of work. And I would rather our housing experts on staff be working to find places for more housing, and rustling up developers, and finding creative solutions to create more affordable housing. So, we heard from Samaritan House earlier this evening, when you guys were hearing about the chronic homelessness situation, they are experts at this. It would be so much easier to take that $100,000, give it to them, they'll make it go much farther, because they triage every situation, they make sure that every client is taking full advantage of food assistance, of, you know, book support for their kids, and free backpacks, and whatever they need. And they do, they have connections to landlords who rent below-market, they know about the voucher system. So I would strongly recommend you sort of, you know, it was a good effort, and I appreciate it, but we have experts who are really good at this in our community, and I think we should trust them. I think the, the requirements to them should be, I think we should add preventing people from becoming displaced, because often, a small, short-term financial crisis causes someone to lose their home, and one month's rent can prevent that. And that might happen more than once a year, but it's not an ongoing chronic thing, and so I think that should be included. And then, anyone who's displaced for any reason and is about to become homeless should be able to talk to Samaritan House and get whatever help they can offer. So I think that would be the cleanest, most efficient, and also most attractive to philanthropy. I am a grant maker. The Grove Foundation's supported safety net services in this community for 30 years. That would be something that we would partner with. Thank you.
Next speaker this evening is Kirk Conroy.
Mayor Mueller, City Council members, thank you for your devoted service to the city and its people, and the opportunity to address you tonight. I agree with many of the members of the Housing Commission that we do need more affordable housing, and not just Menlo Park, but the entire region. However, I want to emphasize one more time that any time you add to the costs or take away the revenues of the housing providers, that you provide an incentive for people to remove their units from the marketplace, and that's been proven in San Francisco and elsewhere. And so I think that there's a lot of very well-intended but misguided perceptions on what the impact of putting these fees on the owners is. And I think that, that should really be taken into account in your decisions tonight. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Rachel Horst.
I'm speaking for myself, not as a housing commissioner, obviously, because we did not discuss the community fund, and I'm here to talk about the community fund. And I'm specifically here to talk about the means testing bit, and about AMI. So the point of the fund would be to help people not covered by the Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance, and those who are at greatest risk of homelessness, right? So I looked at the staff report, and I saw specifically the line about nearly one-third of households in Menlo Park have an income of under $75,000. And I believe this was used to support the decision to set eligibility at 50% or 60% of AMI. So I went to the ACS myself, you know, because I know how to use American Fact Finder, and I just want to break this down, the thinking here. So the definition of a household in the, in American Community Survey is all the people who occupy a housing unit. So that's all related family members, or unrelated people as well, if there are any. Okay? So here's the thing. The one-third figure tells you nothing about household size. Could be a family of 10, could be a single person, could be multiple families. You know, we have a pretty high overcrowding rate here, and it's gone up since, you know, 2012. And I get that the HUD rates are adjusted, but the point is, American Community Survey, American Community Survey does not. Okay? So beyond that, the one-third figure tells you nothing about the rent that those households are paying. And that's what we care about, right? Whether or not a household can afford the housing that they have. So then staff went and did an awesome thing, and I, I really have to applaud them for this presentation, and, because they got all of those numbers, and shut me right up. So I'm going to just point to the important numbers here. Of, you know, 45% of renters are cost-burdened, right? They're spending over 30% of their income on rent. And that includes households that are making over $75,000. So my point is that eligibility and means testing should be about income relative to rent, should be about cost burden, because those are the households that need this help. So on its own, any figure justifying the AMI cutoff is basically useless, because we know who it might capture, but we don't know who we're missing. And we just have to go back to the purpose of the fund. So let's just not be in the business of giving help to a sprinkling of people essentially... not be in the business of giving help to a sprinkling of people essentially arbitrarily, when we could be helping so many more people, because that would just be bad policy. And finally, I just want to echo the words of the others about the relocation payment being paid directly to the future landlord. I mean, not only is that insulting to the renter, it's also kind of unreasonable, because Menlo Park doesn't administer rental vouchers or anything of that nature, and we're certainly not going to start doing that now. And I just want to end with a question, which is whether or not this fund will be open to some tweaks or adjustments in the future, for example, from the Housing Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next commenter is Pamela Jones.
Good evening again, Pamela Jones, resident. I want, I first have a process question, and then I have a statement. The way I read the information on the agenda, and also on agenda item F1, I mean, F3, it says, "Second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1053, and discussion of establishing a community fund." And then, as a part of the attachments, it has resolution number 6488, which would cover that area. So it looks to me like that it's being recommended to pass the ordinance, and also the resolution, should you like it tonight, which would be a two-step process. But my comments are this. One, it was, this is an excellent report. It gave me a lot of information. I support the things that previous speakers have said, but I want us to take this one step further. And that is, a well-intended policy could cause more problems, and I think we need to pay attention to what's going on in Redwood City. It's apparently not terribly successful. It may behoove us to wait and see the outcome of what they're doing, rather than us to hurry up to pass the policy that was not even supported by the Housing Commission, who are the experts in housing, and gave us a robust, healthy tenant relocation ordinance. And the second piece about the fund, I concur with what everybody else has said. It really is not going to meet the needs of people that may in fact need it. If I was a renter, it would not cover me as a retired instructor and healthcare worker. It's assuming that we have a lot more income because we are retired, or because we may have a certain profession, and that is not necessarily true. So, again, I would say, hold off on both of these, and it's also the letter that I sent to you in CCIN, that if you haven't had a chance to read it, I hope that you do. Thank you. And thank you for the work that you're trying to do, because I know you're trying to do the right thing.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Jeff Deng. Mr. Deng, going once, going twice. Okay, our next speaker this evening is Ryan Carrigan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Carrigan, Silicon Valley Association of Realtors. I want to thank you for the long discussion and thoughtful process that we had last time, the 26th when we were here, and I can say quite candidly that the following Monday, I met with the county, county council, and spoke in support of them moving in the same direction that you all decided, and the feedback I got was that they are essentially doing their best to do so, and I think it's great to see that continuity through the area. As far as this fund, quite honestly, the direction as we understood it from the last meeting, and as far as the information that's come out in the staff report, we're supportive of and understand that it is an opportunity to protect those that aren't covered by the ordinance, to do so in a way that sort of ameliorates sort of the legal and other challenges that were a big part of our discussion last time, and in that it does as much. We are supportive of that, and looking forward to this as an opportunity to sort of come back and really get some good information, a good visualization, and see how this situation really is impacting our community. So I really encourage you that as you put some seed money toward this, we keep it very focused, again, on those most impacted in our community, and those that we are trying to cover that weren't part of the previous relocation package. And then, if we need to, or as that fund continues, we can then come back and figure out any changes, or updates, or additions to the ordinance with a much more informed perspective. So again, appreciate the work you did last time, supportive of the fund and the general direction that the staff report recommends, and I really encourage you to stick to that focus again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrigan. Our next speaker, Mr. Deng.
Good evening, City Council. I just had to stress my previous point, which is that when we actually make this, like, ordinance or this proposal, we please also keep in mind that there was also some homeowner, especially those, like, mom-and-pop homeowners or landlords, they also need the help. So we cannot just assume that they would have the money to pay, for example, like, three months or more to help the renter to move. Because think about a lot of, like, mom-and-pop homeowners or landlords, and they may actually rely on the rent to actually pay for the mortgage, pay for the property tax, maybe pay for their kids' education fees, or maybe use the rent to actually prepare for their retirement. So we cannot just, like, assume they have enough savings. Because if they cannot come up with the property tax, and like I said, the mortgage, they could lose their properties, and they could even go bankrupt it. So, and what's think about, actually, when the owner or homeowner actually buy the property, they have to pay the market price. So when they hire somebody to remodel, they have to pay for the market price. So they have to pay the market price for their insurance, like, gardeners, whatever, right? Nobody talking about to put a cap on those kind of costs. We only talking about to put a cap on the rent. So I don't think this is a fair solution. So if, so I think a fair one would be, okay, we put a cap on both the expense, and also put a cap on the rent. And also, we should put, when we actually adding protection for our renters, and we should also add protection for our landlord as well, because they are the home provider of the city, and they should be protected equally. So, for example, currently, if the rent doesn't change, and if a renter, if the renter decided to move, and the landlord cannot find somebody with the same rent, so are there any protection for landlord? Zero. Zero. So they could have, so for example, if they cannot find somebody, would this, would this, the fund be able to help our landlord, especially this mom-and-pop landlord? I mean, I urge the City Council to also think about these situations as well. Because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a homeowner, I'm not a landlord here, but I can, I know as a homeowner, actually, I have a lot of risks. So, for example, what if the earthquake happened? I needed to have the fund to fix the property, right? What if I have other, like, natural disasters? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deng. Our next speaker this evening is Meg McGraw. Share.
Hi. So I was able, I wasn't sure I was going to be here this evening, so I did write a letter that I sent to all of you earlier, and I just want to reiterate a couple of points from my letter. Obviously, I wish that we were able, we were talking about the ordinance that the Housing Commission worked really hard on to try to pass, because we felt like that was the best way to address the problem and the issue. But given that, I'm really hopeful that if you do decide to pass the ordinance, as you discussed two weeks ago, I'd really love to see a community fund that really is impactful, and one that is funded adequately and does the right thing, in terms of helping those most in need. So just a couple of the points I want to reiterate is, I would love to see the AMIs raised up to at a minimum what the ordinance addresses, which is 80% of AMI. I feel emphatic that this assistance should not go to landlords. There's no way that I think it's appropriate to subsidize landlords for increasing rents on tenants. I just, I don't even understand that. I think that if there is a rent increase mechanism, it should be the gold standard for rent gouging, which is CPI plus 5%, again, what we proposed in our ordinance. I think that we need to keep the three months for all households, and four months for special needs households. I don't think term of tenancy should be observed here. Remember, this is a homeless prevention measure. We're trying to help people from becoming homeless. I do think that the assistance should go directly to the tenant. I think that the way it's written, I understand the gist there, but I feel like it's saying that you can't trust people for being victimized and needing money to prevent homelessness. And I think in many cases, people won't find homes right away. They're probably going to be needing that money to potentially just stay in a motel for a couple of weeks. It's very hard to find housing. And lastly, I'm really concerned about the sources of funding for the fund. I think it's wonderful that the city, you all are proposing that the city would seed this, but I think that we do need to go out into the community, especially the landlord community. I think that, it sounds to me like there was some discussions around them being interested in funding this, and I hope that they will come to the table and do this. I'd like to see the ordinance specify some of this stuff, because the way it's written in right now is that there's no guarantee of funding, there's no guarantee that people who qualify will get funding. And so I'd really encourage you to hash out some of those details when finalizing the ordinance, to make sure that it is really effective. And then finally, thank you for all your work on this. I know that this is hard, but I think that if you, if this is put together right, it can hopefully make a real difference for people in our community that need our support and assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Lynn Bramlett.
Thank you. I want to thank Clay, and whomever worked on the report. I think it was very thoroughly done. You know, I hear the tweaks, but obviously, a lot of thought and effort went into this. I agree with the prior comments about the need for diversity in Menlo Park. I mean, I don't want to live in a wealthy enclave, where, you know, workers can't work here, you know, the shops aren't open because people, you know, can't afford the rent, and I don't want to contribute to human misery. So I view this as a step in the right direction, and hopefully, there'll be a lot more. I felt sad walking through... I live near downtown, and I frequently walk there, you know, do my errands that way, so to speak, to see the great frame up closed. And I didn't realize that, because I've been on a long trip, and I do know that her employee was actually living with her, not living with her, in a, you know, but she was renting a room to him, or he couldn't, he couldn't, he wouldn't have housing, and she wouldn't have her employee. And I think if you check with those shops, because I've heard that from more than once, sometimes they're closed because they can't find people. The other two related points I haven't heard brought up is Airbnb. I think we need to look into Airbnb. A lot of people, when you go, you look that up, in Menlo Park, they're renting out places that maybe they would have a roommate if they couldn't get that cash from Airbnb. So it's related to this. I don't, I realize that would be very controversial, but that's something to consider. And then, finally, when landlords come before you and say, "Oh, you know, this is unfair, we're mom-and-pop, we just want to make a profit," or a reasonable profit, I'd like the evidence. I think it'd be really great to have a list of property owners, when they bought that property, what it's worth today, and you can extrapolate what kind of profits they're making. I mean, if my husband and I wanted to move somewhere else and rent out our home, we're sitting on a, you know, could be a major cash cow, like a lot of people who are lucky enough to get in here early. So, you know, that isn't right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead and close public comment. No more public comment cards. Any questions from my colleagues? Let's see, any lights on here initially? Councilmember Carlton, are you with us?
Yes, I am. I'll let my colleague speak first.
Someone's got to raise their hand and go first, guys. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, well, I have a question for staff. The issue came up of, who is the check made out to? So give me some sense of why we went in the direction of the check being made out to the landlord, how that comports with similar assistance programs of this nature.
Sure. I think there was some miscommunication about that particular issue. The resolution itself provides that the city, in its discretion, may make a payment directly to the new landlord or to the tenant. And the thinking around that was that in certain situations, if the city is administering the program, it takes a while for the city to cut a check. And for expediency, if the tenant didn't want, we didn't want the tenant to lose housing that was available, and for expediency, we wanted to give the authority to just, you know, cut a check directly to the landlord. And so it's something that would be used on a case-by-case basis, and it really is a tenant protection measure.
Yeah, totally fair. Thanks for that answer. And then there was this other issue of that sort of, this isn't sort of a guarantee of assistance, right? So the city isn't sort of guaranteeing anyone who may fall within these parameters or criteria assistance. Give me some additional explanation on why that's the case.
Yes. So at this point, there's a very limited amount of funding that we've identified from the city resource perspective, and once that funding is depleted, we don't yet have another source of funding. And so, we just don't know how many tenants are going to need this, and so we will have to determine what the need is. And then, we thought that once we get some information and metrics on the types of displacements we're seeing, we would come back to the council, and the council then could have a further resource discussion.
Thanks.
Okay, so I do know of two other funders who are going to, who are saying that they're going to come forward, once we've had to figure out what the specifics are to this. But I guess we'll have to, we'll wait and see based on the specifics. So I'm, but what I am, so I'm going to, I don't mean to throw everyone a loop, but I'm just going to go first, because I can share where I'm thinking on this, is that I actually do agree with one of the comments, that I really am not interested in creating a giant program internally at the city. Like, I'm not interested in staff resources being dedicated to having to administer this, and it's not the business we're in. And our new housing coordinator, I actually am very interested in them working on developing housing, and figuring out innovative ways around that. So, I am inclined to want to farm this out to Samaritan House personally. And I want to thank the subcommittee. I know you guys put in a lot of hard work on this. So thank you both for doing that. And what I'm saying right now, I know we're going to have discussion around, because I know that you guys have thought about it. My initial take when I look at this is like, I'm ready to just, like, take the $100,000, give it to Samaritan House, with established guidelines, that they don't use it, for instance. So I want it to go to people who are in, I wrote this down, so let me just pull it up, emergency housing and moving expenses situations, but it can't be used for things like legal fees or something that's like, that's not, clearly not what a tenant relocation ordinance was going to do. I want them to keep metrics, I would want them to keep metrics on who they're giving it to, and what the circumstances was around that. The way I see it budgetary is that this is a, we're allocating money to it this year. You know, we'll revisit it in the budget next year with a, with a, basically, I wouldn't know if you'd call it an audit, but a report from Samaritan House, how they used that money, and what those metrics looked like around who got, who got that, or who used money from the fund. I appreciate Ms. Grove's indication that she'd give money to that fund, and would actually encourage others to give money to that fund through philanthropy, so that it grows. I think that we, in doing so, we're going to get smarter about what our situation is, and being able to establish help for those in need. In the same respect, the private, the private party funders, for instance, who I'm talking to, when they give money to the fund, they can establish their criteria... to, when they give money to the fund, they can establish their criteria under which they want the money that they give to the fund doled out. They're giving it to Samaritan House, it's their gift to Samaritan House, and they can say, we only want you to use it for this, this classification of AMI. And I don't think, frankly, that's a gift to Samaritan House that they're making to the fund, so they'd have the ability to control that. But I don't think we should preclude that from people being able to pool in. So for instance, if a major employer or a landlord organization said, we want to give this much money to it, but we prefer our money only be used at this AMI level, well, fine, Samaritan House has that money in order to do that, but that doesn't preclude philanthropy or the city's money to be used in the way we want it to be used. I personally think that giving the money to Samaritan House, our nonprofit, is actually probably going to result in actually less of the potential for waste. Nonprofits hold up to their money very carefully in how they dole it out to people, and what it's being used for, and keep track of it closely, and Samaritan House has a good record around that. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about them feeling like they have a blank check, that's not within their mission, to help people. So those are my, are my initial thoughts on, on how to go forward with the fund. I'm sure there'll be a robust comment around that, but that's just kind of where I am right now, and I really do not want to create another, I really don't want to have this take an enormous amount of staff time and then criteria and double-checking that, and that's something like, that's something that the county would get into. I'm not, I'm not, Menlo Park, we're not that size. We're just not. And I know the people, I'm looking at the people I know who'd be in charge of administering that, and that's going to be, it's going to be difficult, I think, for the size of city we are. So, those are my, oh, and then going that direction too, I think that negates the necessary at this time to talk about whether or not we need to go ahead and figure out whether or not there should be a business license fee or a rental properties fee. We don't necessarily need to do that. That's something that frankly, at the one-year mark, if we're looking at a major, if we're looking at, there's a major problem that hasn't been addressed, and then we look in the audit, and we look at the metrics within the audit, and we say, okay, what is, what's really happening here, then it's something that we're going to need to collaborate with all the stakeholders on, okay, wait, what's happening here? How do we, how do we address this? But I don't think we need to go there tonight. Those are my first inclinations. Anyone want to go ahead? Yeah, Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, so, you know, as I understood it in talking to staff, one of the reasons we went with it being, and the proposal was this idea that in an interim period, it would be administered by staff, while we began the process of, of like actually, you know, whether there needed to be some RFP or some very specific process by which we would seek some nonprofits or organizations that are operating in this space to actually administer it. Now, just so clarifying with the city attorney on the matter, is it, is it, is there, because that was again, part of the concern was that in having it being administered by staff, it could get off the ground quickly, whereas if we were going with some third party, then there would have to be some process, and that would delay the implementation. Is that not the case in this situation?
I don't think there has to be an RFP process for this. If you wanted to designate a particular agency to administer it, you could provide this as grant funding to that particular agency. The problem that we had was that we had not had the discussions with Samaritan House, and we don't know if, you know, they would be willing to operate the program, given our parameters.
Yeah, totally fair. Okay, so that was just, just in follow-up, and I think, and I think it was not the subcommittee's thinking that this would be monitored or administered by the city, you know, continuously, that it would be an interim period. So we always saw that this was not something that fell perfectly within the city's wheelhouse, and that we should bring in, in other, other parties. I think that the, it's something I'd have to, you know, sit on and see what, what others on the dais think. You know, my concern is that, that it just becomes a donation to Samaritan House. And, and that's, and it's a donation with parameters, you know, as if you're saying, like, as if you're donating to Stanford and saying only, you know, you know, only people from Texas. I mean, it just, very much to me, is a removed sort of exercise, and not what I thought that we were getting into, where the city was actually on a, you know, having a relationship and an ongoing understanding specifically of this population that has these needs. I'm not saying that I can't be convinced, but I'm saying that this might be the right route to go, but, but I think that that is, that is my, you know, my concern, that it just sort of, kind of bubbles up to, you know, to, to a donation, and a situation where, since they're already specifically operating in this space and providing funds to people, it just becomes a way of which they then sort of say, okay, you know, you're a Menlo Park resident, and so then we can, you know, we're not going to pull from this pot of money, we'll pull from this pot of money. And it becomes very sort of, you know, again, like I say, like, just a donation and some sort of like funds, and it's where, what qualifications you meet, and then they're going to sort of make those funds available to you based on that. Again, you know, my concern is, is I, I hear the proposal initially. As I sit on it, over the course of, you know, this, this debate, maybe that, that will change.
Yeah, so I, the problem is, I don't know what the, so, I mean, technically, it would be a donation to them with criteria attached, that it'd only be for Menlo Park residents under specific, you know, and it couldn't be used for some, some like legal fees and circumstances like that, but are specific circumstances, it would be used that way, but it would be a fund specifically designated so, under their charity, under their nonprofit to administer. I can't think of another way that a nonprofit would be able to administer it. I mean, I don't think there's an alternative path for a nonprofit to do that, so it's either we do that with a nonprofit, or we have the county administer it, or we would have the city administer it. But either way, someone has to do it. And a donation, I mean, it would be, like I said, with, it would be with them collecting the information on an audit-based system every year. I think it's more than just giving money away and saying, here's money, go, you know, do your thing. I think it's the establishment of a relationship with Samaritan House that we're giving them, that it were, it's something programmatic that we've put together with them, that would, that we would review at the year-end. So if we were just, I think it's, there's a, there's a, there's a definite distinction as opposed to saying, here's $100,000, bye. But if we said to them, look, we're putting together, we're putting together this fund for you to administer, we're going to invite philanthropy and private sector partners to do it for our population in Menlo Park under these specific circumstances, and we want you to, we want you to report back on the metrics from that at the year-end, so we know in our next year's budgetary process how we're going to approach it. I think it rises past the level of just a philanthropic donation.
Just one follow-up question on that, but then, so if the whole idea is that, you know, this is not all being collected into one fund, the public component and the private component, because based on your analysis, the private stakeholders get to set their own sort of, you know, criteria, then there's really no way to collect, like, consistent data, because they've set different metrics. They've set metrics based on, you know, 100 AMI, 100% AMI, we've set it based on 80% AMI. I feel that like, again, so there's, so there's those stakeholders that are interested possibly in contributing based on the debate that we've had in the city over the course of the month. But if then they get to sort of make a, you know, a general donation to Samaritan House and set their own criteria, I don't, I have an issue within how we can sort of collect data and say it's all saying the same thing, when it covers different, different, different populations.
Why couldn't we say to Samaritan House, based on the amount of money that come from these stakeholders and their criteria, keep track, keep a record of it, and we'll look at it, and then keep a record of what happened with ours?
So then, then, so they set it at 100 AMI, we set it at some, you know, 80% AMI, you know, they say, you know, it has to, we say you have to live in the city for 12 months, they say you have to live in the city for six months. It just, again, to me, it goes back to the, it's a donation, you set the criteria, you know, I'm, and less so about what I initially envisioned as part of this process. Everyone's sort of kind of into doing their own things, and it just seems like to me, if the end of like this debate is the idea that like, yeah, let's get everyone to contribute as much money as they, you know, to Samaritan House, then to me, I'm, I'm left a little deflated, that we engaged in this whole debate, and at the end of the day, what it means is that, you know, Samaritan House gets, you know, $300,000 more dollars, and it's not that, that, that we actually got very something clear in the city, that this is this new policy or proposal or program that specifically helps people out.
Yeah, but it's not about the policy or proposal, it's about what the end goal of that proposal is. If the end goal of that proposal is that at the end of it, we have addressed those who are in need of rental relocation assistance, so that they don't end up homeless, whether or not we set the criteria at our bar, or the landlord-tenant organization sent it at their bar of a different AMI, as long as that money was dispersed, we've achieved the goal, right? I mean, the policy may not be the most beautiful-looking policy at the end of the day, but at the end of the day, people got helped, and we have metrics about who got helped, and we can go back and analyze that in the next year. It's not going to be like, it's, I guarantee, I agree with you, we're not looking at like, this coming off the line like a Tesla. This is coming off the line as a, as something that's being pieced together, perhaps inartfully, but at the end of the day, it's going to get people from here to there. But I hear what you're saying, I understand the concerns, and I, I respect them, and I hear what you're saying completely. It's not, it's not the most, it's not the, it's not the, it's not the most, how would you put it, elegant solution, but I think it's, but I think it's like, sometimes you don't look for the most elegant solution, you look for how, just how to get it done.
May I speak on this?
Yeah. Yeah, Councilmember Carlton.
You know, in mathematics, when you talk about an elegant solution, generally, you're talking about something that's been pared down to something very simple that achieves what you're trying to achieve. And when you first said this, I was kind of shocked, like Councilmember Combs, but I'm, as you're talking, I'm thinking about this, and I'm thinking, what are we trying to achieve, and what is the most direct, with the fewest moving parts and costs and all this, to get there? And one of the things that I was thinking about in all this is Redwood City is actually doing a fee study to better determine all the associated costs, the impact on staff time and all this, and I was actually really curious to see what was going to come up with that, because I was really concerned about how much it was going to cost the city to administer this, and if the city was going to come back and say, oh, we need to hire more people, which I don't think any of us want. So as I'm thinking about it, I'm warming to your suggestion, Mayor Mueller. I think, at first, I was thinking, well, what are the, what are the costs going to be to Samaritan House for administering this? But that could be part of the parameters. You could say, you know, this is going to help you achieve your goals in helping us achieve our goals, and really, though, reading off, they haven't agreed to it at this point, but they agreed to administer it per our rules, or we find another solution. But I would be very curious to have that discussion with them, and to find out if they would like to administer these funds and help people. They are experts in the area. This is certainly within their wheelhouse to do so, and whether they do it, or our staff does it, or another third party does it, it's something doing what needs to be done to help the people, and that's what we're trying to achieve. And so, yeah, it's not what we initially had thought out, but it's finding someone to make life better for these people, to help them out, in the most efficient and effective way possible. And I, I'm arguing that we keep our mind open.
Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you. I have a question for Clay. Has anybody contacted you to access the funds or in need of the funds? I know it's all new, but...
Right, no, it's way too early, and we haven't done any outreach prior to the city council's officially establishing the fund.
Okay. I remember when the subcommittee met, that one of the discussions was with Rhonda, who is not here. One of the questions that came up, and you can correct me, is Rhonda here?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't see her. Hi, Rhonda. Okay, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Combs. One of the questions for Rhonda was, who administers, what organization already does this type of work? And I can't remember if she said something that was county, or something that the Fair Oaks Community Center does, like something that's already set up. So looking at who would potentially administer this, was somebody that already does the work. My other, one of my concerns around accountability, compliance, audits, is when we outsource with the city of Menlo, when the city of Menlo Park outsources anything, that that's when we lose accountability, we lose compliance, because we have to wait for that organization to actually submit a report to us. And so that was one of my concerns about having an outside agency administer these funds. But I do understand the burden on staff, and so if it meant the staff did this for 30 days until we got something in place, whether it's Samaritan House or another organization, I'm definitely in support of that. I have one last question for staff, just because it's late. We are set at 80% AMI for the funds, or are we set at a different AMI?
For the community fund, my understanding is what the, there was not consensus, so we've listed the two ranges that were discussed, the 50, 60, as well as the 80% that's in the ordinance.
So do we still need to determine what, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to provide some additional information to the, perhaps the newer council members, each year, the city goes through a community funding process, and we allocate, there's a formula that allocates a certain portion of our budget, of our general fund budget, to a variety of community services that really meet needs of the, of the residents of Menlo Park, that may not, that are not services that are traditionally provided by, by the city. Samaritan House was, in fact, a recipient of a grant last year, and I believe the request was for about $27,500. We awarded about $10,000. It sounds what the council is, or what the discussion is this evening would be very similar to the community grant funding process. We have guidelines, we have an evaluation process to evaluate whether the community agencies are meeting the guidelines, whatever those may be, for the program. So just for your discussion, I wanted to toss it out, that this is somewhat a precedent that the city has to provide funding directly to agencies that meet needs that the city does not current, that the city does not provide directly, and we can go through that, and there's an established process in subcommittee, actually, from the city council to review that annually.
Just a quick follow-up. And so with those grants, does it come with actual sort of recipient criteria?
So the staff report relative to this item, the, one of the specific criteria is that the nonprofit provide a substantial and demonstrate services that are provided to residents of Menlo Park. So as part of the application, we ask, how many folks in Menlo Park have you served? What, and, and we can always add, particularly if this is a more significant contribution, we could always enter into discussions with the nonprofit agency to clarify more clearly what our expectations are relative to outcomes or data collection, et cetera.
Just, but just, I mean, and not to belabor the point, but it is a more general grant, of which we're saying here, we see what are the services you provide, and we see that some portion of the people benefiting from your
some portion of the people benefiting from your services are Menlo Park residents and here is some money. It is not, right, here is some money and...
It's not, it's not one size fits all, Drew. So sometimes the applications are very general, sometimes they're very specific. And we go through this process both for the city of Menlo Park and then there's also the Facebook Community Fund, which is also administered and the Facebook Community Fund is actually very specific, those are also very specific grant applications. And frankly, the amount of funding typically in the past, having served on that committee, sometimes the amount of funding someone gets is based on the specificity of the grant application. If it's a bad grant application where it's just like, oh, they just generally want a donation, they don't get as much.
Yeah, just like I say, I think that there is, there's a delta there, right? I think that there is a difference between a, a community or nonprofit organization saying, this is the line of business I am, you are a funding source, I'm going to go to you and ask for money and you will give me money based on, you know, the extent to which you like my application than a situation where a funding source goes to an organization and say, hey, this is the impact I want to have, this is the specific population that I want to benefit and I want you to create a specific procedure and process around delivering that. I'm just saying, I see it as different.
I can see that, I can see them as different, so. All right, Councilmember Nash.
I was wondering if we can, either Clay or Rhonda has any information about how many, how staff at Redwood City does this and how many staff are involved?
So with Redwood City, when we were discussing the program that they have there, they have a deposit assistance, rental deposit assistance. So it's administered, there's eight core service centers throughout the county and Redwood City hosts one of them at the Fair Oaks Community Center. Here in Menlo Park, Samaritan House South is that core service center for this area. So at the Fair Oaks Community Center, there are several different organizations, nonprofit organizations that have wraparound services, if you will, kind of information and referral. People come in and get whatever services they need there. And so the city staff administer the specific fund for the deposit and so as Kara said earlier, if, that, that specific funding is tied to seeing a rental agreement because it's going specifically for a security deposit. So that's, you know, and it's a pretty straightforward process and when, when folks come in to be assessed, they're assessed initially for income, so all that information is, they know immediately like what services they're eligible for and make those referrals in addition to that one particular service, the deposit assistance.
So the rental ordinance that we are working off of, that Redwood City, Redwood City's rental ordinance uses the Fair Oaks Center?
No, they're two separate...
Okay. What I'm wondering is, do you have any idea how much staff is, is used for the rental ordinance that we're modeling after?
Yeah, it would be, it would be less than one staff person, just a small percentage of their time because they already have a process set up, they have an intake process already set up.
So the person's already in the system? Or has, there's, okay, there's a system already...
The city has a process already, an intake process already set up.
Okay. Because I, it makes sense to me that Samaritan House has all of the wraparound services, they have the infrastructure already set up to administer this sort of program, whereas we would have to build it from, granted, Rhonda is here right now, which is wonderful and Clay has a lot of experience as well in this sort of area, but it seems that it would be, I would much prefer to have staff here working on housing and trying to get more affordable housing, how we can increase housing for the city and have a group such as Samaritan House, as Ray, as Mayor Mueller has, okay, still haven't gotten used to that, has suggested, actually administer the program. It seems that they have the wraparound services, they have a lot of infrastructure already in place and they can, I would imagine that they can probably even get it up and running much more quickly than we can, where we have nothing at this point in place, although excellent staff. But, and I'm wondering whether we can even put together some sort of form that whenever they disperse the funds, we would ask them to PDF the form in, to, that the funds have been dispersed and that way we could both have more accountability and also keep track of how many people, what sorts of situations it's actually helping.
Can I respond to that?
Please.
So I would just like to offer as part of this discussion, in my previous role with the city of Redwood City for approximately 18 years, I was responsible for the administration of federal grants, close to $2 million a year. And federal grants come with the most onerous regulatory requirements that exist and we funded roughly 20 or more nonprofit organizations every year, including Samaritan House. And each of those organizations, some maybe operated one program and that was what they were, they were good at doing, some operated multiple programs. And so our requirement stated, here's, here's what we're going to, they would, we would specify exactly what the funds were to be used for, we would specify exactly the criteria, the information that they were required to collect, the information they were required to report back to us, so that we had really good performance measurement and outcome information on, on the exact use of our funds. So in this case, for example, if Menlo Park was to allocate them $100,000 for, you know, a rental assistance program, the city could, could be specific about exactly who they can serve under that program. So that, that happens a lot and these nonprofit organizations are very familiar with how that works, including Samaritan House. And I know we haven't talked to them yet about this, if they're willing, but I know that they have the expertise to, to know how to, to do that and how to track that separately and produce information that would be useful to you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'd be okay with sort of moving on to talking the actual sort of criteria and see, unless there was anything, anyone else.
It's fine. Is everyone, everyone in agreement, we can move on to the next topic around criteria? Okay. Councilmember Carlton, you're good?
Yeah.
Excellent, okay. Who wants to open the discussion? Someone's got to jump in the pool. Councilmember Nash.
I was wondering if there could be, I would like to know how the AMI choices were made, the 50 to 60% and then the 80% and why this was chosen.
Yeah, I mean, I can, you're from the subcommittee, yeah, I can chime in, I'm pretty sure the, the vice mayor can, can then come in and correct me. But there was, I think that there was, was some, like, there was a lack of consensus. I think that, as I remember it, the vice mayor was in favor of, of a higher AMI, I was in favor of, of a lower AMI and I think that that tracks with, you know, the discussion that we had around the ordinance itself, where I saw it as, as a kind of a homeless prevention measure and was wanting to make sure that it was something that, that was helping those most in need. And like I said, I think that, that the vice mayor, and again, not wanting to speak for her, wanted to cover a broader population of people that, of course, were in need. And so I think that, you know, our recommendation to staff was that, you know, we, you know, bring, bring the option to the dais and see where the consensus was.
Another question, I know it's somewhere in this information, but perhaps staff can clarify what the, we're talking about AMI based on, what I'm trying to get at is Samhale County versus Menlo Park, where my understanding is we have much higher rent here and so that to me would mean that we'd want to work with a higher AMI.
Correct. The AMI tables are based on a county level. We have some rough, you know, American Community Survey data on what the median income is in Menlo Park, but we wouldn't have the same breakdown that's available at the county level.
I have a question for you guys and it's, I know this is another eight ball, but if we, if we gave it to Samaritan House and said, instead of focusing on the AMI, we focused on the circumstance. So if we gave it, wanted to fund to Samaritan House and we said to them, because I think that when we talk about the AMI and I've been, I was right there with you, Drew, and have been, and that when we talk about a number, it's like, all right, if you're like at a certain threshold, it's like, are you really in danger of being homeless, right? But if you said to Samaritan House, only use it for people who are going like in danger of being homeless, right? Who are, you know, use your, use your discretion and report back to us, but use it to prevent people who have seen a circumstance as now that they need to be relocated or in the short term are in danger of homelessness, would that sort of take care of, could that somehow subsume this issue? I see people shaking their head and I'm not sure, like, why? Like, does it subsume the issue because Samaritan House is now saying to us, we looked at this issue, these are the things we looked at and we think that this person is in danger of it, so we used it to give them a hotel room for a few nights or something like that? But then, or no?
So I'll, I'll just sort of say, as I see it, it removes the sort of the means testing, right? And that's the core of, of understanding that we are helping those truly in need. And so that's how I see it. Now, we can put a pin in that and I'll say, I can, I can go with that. I can go with your, your proposal.
Okay.
But I'm just going to say, like, I'm not changing how I see it, I'm just saying, I can, I can agree with you and go down this road with you.
Yeah, I mean, well, the thing is, and I'm not, I'm, just want to have the discussion around it, because look, at the end of the day, what I would have gotten to, at the end of the day, it's like if Samaritan House, and it might even be worth a discussion, you know, I hate to do it to bring you back, bring you back up. Rhonda, do you want to come back up? Is what we're talking about, is it, is Samaritan, in your experience, is Samaritan House as a practitioner going to feel comfortable with that sort of guideline or are they going to want an AMI?
I, I think if they, if we're clear about what some of those examples of circumstances are, and I think they understand very well homelessness prevention means, I think they would be okay with that. That's, that would be my guess.
Okay. Because the thing is, because we've heard the dialogue about, okay, what happens if you are a teacher and you're making a certain amount of money and then you did get stuck in that situation and what just recently happened where you saw, you know, you saw a midterm 200% rent increase, right? In that circumstance, we haven't covered that, that teacher cannot go anywhere, they are in contract with that school district. It's a, I grant it, it's a rare circumstance, I would, I believe, unless we're going to get a report back from Samaritan House a year from now and they're going to say, this happened 40 times to us, I do believe it's a very rare circumstance. Do, would we want the fund to preclude help for that Menlo Park resident? I don't think we would, so. But I think it all comes down to is how do we provide, how do we provide that guidance in the description of the fund to Samaritan House and work with them to make it tight enough that it, and I'm, I think that they'll have an interest in doing that with us too because they're not going to want to be with us a year from now with the audit report and us going, what did you do? Right? Like, no one wants that to happen. We don't want it to happen, they don't want that to happen. So, does that make sense?
It does to me and having worked with them for many years, I think having the conversation and conveying to them what it is that we're looking for, I think they have the capacity to carry this out and to keep good, good records, to provide information. And also, you know, there are times where you, you state exactly what it can be used for and some of these organizations might have an exception, they might have a reasonable accommodation come in or something that's outside of those parameters. They're kind of used to picking up the phone or shooting an email out and asking, hey, we have this unique circumstance, could we exceed the amount we normally provide or could we do something differently? And so they're, they're used to checking. And so I would see, I would envision it working that way where, you know, if they, if we give them some kind of list and idea of, you know, the various circumstances and then if something is really outside of that, that they could reach out to staff.
So if we said to you tonight, look, we're interested in going this direction, can you sit down with Samaritan House, having taken the direction of council on what we're trying to achieve and then come back to us with the parameters for the fund that they've agreed to? And then at the same time, given the flexibility to, to the, another organization to come in with if they want to put in a specific criteria of AMI on what their donation to the fund, that's something that, that is achievable, do you think, in the short term?
I do.
Okay.
I do. It really is based on Samaritan House capacity and they're already, I'm thinking they're likely to, to be open to this because they're already administering so many of the services at Samaritan House South, so.
Okay.
Just an additional, an add.
Any other comment on the dais? Councilmember Carlton, where are you at?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about it because obviously the Brown Act has made it so that I, all these ideas are new to me too. And I, I'm, I'm in agreement, I think they're the experts and I'm pretty passionate about, I'm very cognizant of the fact that we are dealing with taxpayer dollars and I want to make sure that we're being very responsible with this and giving it to the people that really need it. And I trust that sometimes AMI is too blunt of an instrument and that the people at Samaritan House are intelligent enough and experienced enough to be able to follow that direction and I trust they'll report back what, how it's been used for us to follow that.
Okay. I think, so I think we're all, we all come to this conclusion that we're willing to go down this and Clay, we'd love to have you, all of you in the discussion with Samaritan House to bring this back to us, so.
So can I raise one issue?
Certainly.
And that is, I heard comment about how the funds could be used, which is different than I think the purpose of the fund. So if it's just for relocation, it wouldn't be for like temporary hotel or to avoid homelessness, it's really about helping somebody get into new housing or replacement housing. And so if you want, if, if, if the intent is to broaden the use for which the funds could be used, I think we need to, we need some direction on that or is it really about deposit moving expenses, et cetera? So there's, I think we just need some clarity around that to help in the discussions with Samaritan House, number one. And number two, I think some clarity or possible direction on the maximum amount that any one recipient could receive. Because again, we are talking about $100,000, presumably a portion of that is going to be an administrative expense or we're going to have to spend more than $100,000 because generally there's going to be some cost of administering the fund. So unless they do it for free, there's going to be that discussion. But, so if it's $5,000 per person, that's 20 people, if it's, you know, so is it higher or lower than that? So again, there may be some flexibility in it, but I think there needs to be at least some, some possible direction from you tonight on what that might be. So those two topics.
So me personally, tenant relocation is obvious, that was the whole point of this. What I would like to see though is, because it's, and it's somewhat been somewhat missing from the discussion, frankly, it could be... What I would like to see, though, is, because it's somewhat, been somewhat missing from the discussion, frankly, it could be, is that we haven't actually had a practitioner in here to tell us what the average, what's the average expenditure in this circumstance, right? I mean, we haven't, we've been saying this much rent, that much rent, but we haven't said to someone who's in the business of actually dealing with people in this circumstance, look, what's the, what's the outlay in this circumstance, in a cafeteria? So if you're looking at the caf, so if I'm in line in the cafeteria, and I'm saying, okay, I'm gonna take care of tenant relocation costs, what's that? What's that look like? Tell me what that number is. And then, okay, if that's affordable and I can do more, what's the next thing on the rung? Because part of the discussion is that this whole time, which has been a conflict point, is that we're all saying to the Housing Commission, you're trying to achieve stuff you can't achieve with with the tenant relocation ordinance, there's extra stuff in here. So I think, that was part, I mean, the, part of the, I mean, part of the criticism was that you can't, you're using this as an anti eviction ordinance when you can't, it's not an anti eviction ordinance. And it's, and like, Bill just pointed out, well, it's not, was it really anti homeless ordinance, or was it a tenant relocation ordinance? So the question, so tenant relocation costs is number one, and number two, and number one. And then the second thing is, I would say is, actually, I'd be looking for guidance on them, on what else they think, what else that they could reasonably foresee within a cost profile as being something that they would recommend if we were looking at that. What you're really talking about is stabilization in an exigent circumstance, right? And a relocate, I mean, that's really what you're talking about, what you're talking about when you're getting a relocation fees. Because I thought what we were talking about is, these people have been evicted, and they may not have funds to go anywhere, given the current housing climate. And so that is an exigent circumstance, and you're trying to stabilize it through a tenant relocation fee. And so if there's something else that they think that somehow meets that criteria, that's not gonna be ranked the bank on a per capita basis, I'd be interested in hearing that from them when the fund comes back. Does that make sense to others, or no?
Well, I mean, I would have my own thinking, separate from what they say. And it would, it would be that I would look at something along the lines of, you know, a one-time payment just across the board of $2,500, no more than that. I always said that I saw this as something that would help, but certainly wasn't, you know, sort of to use a legal term, making someone whole, in the sense of all of the expenses associated. This would be, you know, sort of one thing, or one resource of which they can rely on. And the extent to which now we are going and having it administered by a third party, I even more so think of it in that way. Of, you know, because if we're looking at it like, then having to be some analysis of like, well, how many bedrooms do you have in your current place? And that's gonna be dependent on how much you get, or like, how long your tenancy is, and has been, and that being another variable. I think, especially if we're going in the direction of giving more agency to Samaritan House, then certainly, I think some of these, these like, you know, having to check, like, the number of bedrooms, having to check and confirm tenancy, seems to me to be going in the opposite direction. And so I would be looking at it as, like, you know, a one-time, again, like, a single fee that we set, of which residents of Menlo Park who fit the criteria, or to some degree that we outline, would be entitled to a $2,500 check as part of the, helping them to find new housing.
I'm actually fine with that, I'm just trying to figure out, what's the dollar number? Like, what's the dollar number that's appropriate? I don't know the answer to that.
See, for me, I see that the dollar number as being appropriate based on, you know, the limit of the fund, right? And just this idea of wanting to have it be a number that has some impact, right? But then able to spread across a fair number of people.
I totally hear you, I respect it, I agree with you, I just don't know, is it 2,500, is it 2,000, like, what's the number, right? Like, I just don't know what the, I don't, Councilmember Nash?
So I actually thought this was going in a slightly different direction, and that was when I thought that there was some discussion about actually being able to prevent homelessness and eviction in the situation of perhaps a Menlo Park teacher who has some issue that makes it hard for one, to pay one month's rent, and that that may actually be a less expensive way to go than to actually let that person go into homelessness, or basically have to change their housing, in which case it may be a larger payment. So I prefer to have a little bit more discretion with Samaritan House to be able to hopefully prevent some of the situations that would then be much more detrimental, both to the person and perhaps cost more. And then I also would see the advantage of Samaritan House is actually having some of the wraparound services, so that it gets out of a one-size-fits-all. And in fact, actually, they may not, some of the folks may not need as much assistance, because Samaritan House is actually able to help in other ways. And so I feel more comfortable with giving more leeway to Samaritan House. Perhaps, as Rhonda was saying, giving them some guidelines where they need to, perhaps if it meets some criteria, it has to get, they have to request, they have to check with the city, to see whether or not that fits our guidelines. But basically, giving them more leeway to make judgment calls, given that they have the experience.
So, my only concern is that we wanna make sure, I mean, we wanna make sure the money's there for rent and relocation, right? So we definitely wanna make sure that we're not, like, a year from now, saying that the fund dried up, and we're going back to landlords, because it wasn't for relocation. But I do agree that if we embark on this, the community fund, and if we embark on the community fund and it's just not being drawn on for that purpose, and they reach out to staff and say, we have this circumstance that we can prevent homelessness with the fund, that's something that staff can come to us and say, look, you guys put $100,000 on, there's not a problem here. We wanna go ahead and address the fund and whether we loosen it up. I'm totally fine with that. Like, are you guys, does that make sense? So we can give the Samaritan Fund the ability to continue to communicate with staff, tell us what's happening, and then we can, as we see what the draw upon is on the fund, we can adjust it through that process. But, does that make sense? Yeah? Yeah. Councilmember Carlton? So it'll be limited to begin with?
Yes, it does make sense.
So it'll be limited to the relocation to begin with, but with the ability for them to go ahead and reach out to us to expand, based upon what the draw is looking like?
Okay. I mean, I think we can deal with that, and no direction on terms of amount, or let them, talk with them about what those criteria should be?
So I, so I actually, I know I can, I can feel you both, I can feel you both. I love you both. I wanna, I personally wanna hear, I personally wanna hear from them, on what they think, what they think the amount is, with the idea that we want this money to go as far as possible. So we want to be, they have other funding sources too, so.
Although, can I, I really do wanna hear what Councilmember Nash was gonna say, if you want.
I was just going to say, I imagine that they want to help as many people as possible as well. So I would imagine that they would be prudent with the money.
Great. You good? We're good? So now we have to still go to the ordinance?
Right, so on the fund, I think we have the direction, I'm looking across the room to make sure that, I got nods of heads over there, but I think we have the direction to go talk with Samaritan House, and then return with something for approval. And it just remains what meeting that is, depending on how fast that can be done, and write up the criteria, and put together an agreement with Samaritan House to do that.
And a dollar limit, so we want advice on a dollar limit to pick. And then the ability, you guys understand, the ability for others to pay, to put into the fund with what criteria they have, so. Councilmember Carlton, are you great?
Yeah.
Awesome. Councilmember Nash?
I would just request that perhaps someone gives Samaritan House a call first thing tomorrow morning before it hits the newspapers.
It's all tentative. All right, so now we get to talk about the ordinance. Who wants to go first? Councilmember Taylor, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing to say, in the current form, I will still vote no.
That's fair. Any other comments? Councilmember Combs, you look like you're, go for it.
Well, we had some emails that came into the CCIN regarding Sections 8.56, 120, the last two sections, the, you know, retaliation and failure to comply, and there was whether, and there was some, it wasn't clear whether these were in the Redwood City ordinance or not, and if not, why, what value do they add being in this ordinance?
Yes, so we did talk about this briefly at the last meeting. Those two provisions are not in the Redwood City ordinance, they were added to this ordinance. That was a staff judgment call. We think that it's fairly common in tenant relocation ordinances to have an anti-retaliation provision. So we included an anti-retaliation provision in the Housing Commission ordinance that was brought forward, and so we carried that provision over to the Redwood City ordinance as well. And then also, we thought that it was appropriate to have a remedy section for violation of the ordinance. If there is no remedy specified in the ordinance, then the recourse is really a misdemeanor, a criminal citation for violation of the ordinance. And we didn't think that that was appropriate for this type of ordinance. And so we created a private cause of action instead. And that's why we added those two provisions.
Councilmember Carlton? Anything to add?
On that specifically, no.
Okay, but anyone have anything more to add on the ordinance, or Councilmember Nash?
I just wanna add, there's been a lot of discussion over the last couple days about the Redwood City tenants, and the concern that the ordinances are failing to protect the ordinance, the tenants. And that there's situations that are, a tenant attorney, David Daniel Saver, says, if the landlord gave them eviction notices, they would have had to pay the relocation assistance, but instead they gave a massive displacement rent increases. So that the property owner is using loopholes in the new renter protection ordinances to avoid paying relocation fees by increasing rents instead of sending out eviction notices. So we have, and then the other issue is just that we have nothing for no cause evictions. So I'm just concerned about unintended consequences.
So I have to say, the Redwood City situation does vex me. Is there anything we can do in terms of bad faith compliance?
So originally, the community fund was set up to address that issue, because we did identify that, the council discussed that issue, that one way to get around the ordinance would potentially be to increase the rent. And so the community fund was intended to backfill for that scenario.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll keep an eye then on what's happening there, because I know it's being alleged there, and it does concern me, but I'd like to actually wait and see see exactly what plays out, in terms of what the facts are that are ultimately discovered. I know that that council, I've talked to one council member in Redwood City who's indicated to me that they're gonna go ahead and fill me in on what they actually defined out of fact finding in that scenario, and then we can take it up with, I personally would wanna address it that way. So, because we do have the backfill now on it, and I'm curious to see how they do, how they do address it, based on that fact finding of what actually happened there. So, Councilmember Nash?
Are you speaking of the backfill, meaning the community fund?
Yeah.
That does not address no cause eviction?
No, I understand that. Like I, I've indicated to you before, if you wanna talk about no cause eviction process wise, I think we need to bring that up in its own singular process, so.
Mayor Mueller, I do have one question.
Yeah, Councilmember Carlton?
I just want clarification, we've looked at alternatives 1, 2, and 3. We're now talking about Samaritan House, are we still talking about those alternatives?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, Clay, can you help me?
Sure, I think what Councilmember Carlton is talking about is the payment amounts tied to the community fund, but the consensus we heard from the council tonight is to discuss that with Samaritan House, and find out what they would suggest in regards, what would be the most effective payment amounts.
Okay, that's, but I just wanted to make sure that we were no longer having that discussion, or at least it would come back to us after you've spoken to Samaritan House.
Correct, so now the discussion is about the actual ordinance with the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1053, which is the first part of the, the first attachment to the staff report.
All right, okay, I was just making that clarification, thank you.
All right, so it doesn't sound like we have any amendments that have been gonna be proposed, so if someone wants to make a motion, we can just go ahead and move on.
I'll move.
All right, do I have a second?
I second.
Let's vote.
Aye.
Sorry, it's taking me a while to get my screen up.
The motion passes with Mayor Protem Taylor and Councilmember Nash deciding.
All right. Moving on to item F4, and thank you all very much, appreciate it. Moving on to item F4, we have to-
Thank you for your suggestions, they were good suggestions, Mayor Mueller.
Oh, thanks. Moving on to item F4, discuss and provide direction on city's travel policy and/or adopt resolution number 6485, rescinding city council procedure number CC 1801 and adopting city council procedure number CC 1902 titled City of Menlo Park Travel Meal and Lodging Policy. We have a staff, oh, no staff presentation. Questions will be answered by Mr. McClure or Kara Silver. Anyone have any questions regarding the travel policy? Pulling it up myself.
I move, I move for adoption.
Just one second. Councilmember Combs?
Oh, sorry, I did second.
Oh, Councilmember?
I apologize if other council members wanted to comment.
Okay, you're moving for a second? Okay, I, I'm just looking at the policy real quick, I have a question for Mr. McClure. Does the policy set forth now that if you're going to be traveling, that before travel, if you're traveling, using the city's, using your city title, that you have to give notice prior to that travel? Or is it only when you are, only when someone's paying for- Or is it only when you are, only when someone's paying for it?
That is a good question, and I'm just looking for the language right now. It, I believe it is in the "travel paid by third parties." So, so they're in the sister city, in foreign travel, there's the language limiting signing documents agreements, so shall not have authority to sign city-related official documents individually or on behalf of the city council unless it has been pre-approved. And then in the "travel paid by third parties," there is the preapproval process, and then... Sorry.
Yeah, so I'll get to where I'm going, is that, and when I was in Santa, when I was working for Senator Semien, excuse me, Supervisor Semien in Santa Clara County, Santa Clara County had a really, a policy that in retrospect, I think is actually really sound, where they basically said, "Look, if you're traveling outside of the county and you're using your title, whether someone else is paying for it or not, they want it to be on an agenda at least, at least one agenda prior to that travel so that the public knows that you're traveling outside the county using your title." And I actually would support that.
I would be supportive also, but what are we defining as using your title?
So if you use the name, if you use, so Menlo Park, and then any official designation related to Menlo Park, within our, within our, and I've talked with Bill about this in the past, because I'm hypersensitive to it, when you're, within all of our bios right now, we're all council members, right? But I once, when I was, the first time I served as mayor, someone came to me and asked me if they could use, they wanted to use, they wrote a book, and they wanted to use my, they wanted to be able to say that I had read that book or something, and like what I thought of it, and they wanted to say Menlo Park Mayor. I was like, this doesn't feel right. So I went to Bill, and Bill, at the time, told me, "Look, within your title, you can say, you know, within your bio, you can say that you are an elected official, but you can't use the city's name." Right? So I've always tried to adhere by that now. And there's a difference too, because there will be times when we will travel outside of the city, and we are actually, it's not to someone else's benefit, where we do actually, you are going to like be asked to sit on a panel somewhere else. And when you're going to be asked to sit on that panel, they're going to want to say you're Menlo Park official, and that's, there's nothing wrong with that, right? We're all individually elected officials, and that's all within our prerogative. The only thing that, the only reason why to say, "Okay, we're going to go ahead and list that now," is because there's no possible way someone internally to the city would know we were doing that somewhere else. And so for that level of transparency that we are, and that's why Santa Clara County does it, Santa Clara County has a level of transparency where they say, "Look, if you're going to use your title anywhere out of the county, there's no way, no one would know that unless we actually listed it somewhere for people to see it, because you're not here." So, and I think that will actually, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do in doing this is not create a system where we're getting each other in trouble, but rather, we're avoiding trouble for each other. So that, so that if something comes up later, we don't lose political capital as a council to do good work.
So just, there is some language under authorized expenses on page 2 of the policy, which says that city funds, equipment, titles, and staff time must only be used for authorized city business. So you can only use your title as a city council, Menlo Park City Council member...
I remember that.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, only in connection with city business.
Right.
Which is kind of addressed the issue of, in a different bio for a different purpose, not including your title or affiliation with the City of Menlo Park.
All right, so, so we all know that now. We can't use our title but for a city authorized purpose.
Correct.
And then if we're traveling...
I have a question.
Okay.
All right.
Just, I will come back, I promise. So the only thing I wanted to just then say, Bill, that that doesn't cover notice to the public that if we're using it outside of the county?
Correct. So if, if city funds are being used to pay for attendance, then there's a requirement for reporting afterwards?
Yeah, so I'd be, so to my colleagues, what I'd be interested in would be that prior to the event, it would go onto a city, it would be, well, the way they did it in Santa Clara was it actually had like an area that said, like, "Travel, Council Travel." And if we were traveling somewhere outside of the county, and it would be outside of the county, because inside the county, we're going to like, you guys are going to, we're going to be on panels. But if you're traveling outside of the county, it would say, it would just say this, it would say the date where you're doing it, and that you're, and it's, that you're using your council title there. So, Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, I'm just, in theory, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I just want to make sure I'm clear. Because I actually had a conversation about this with Joe Semiden, and he absolutely balked and said, you know, "I'm an elected official that was given to me by the voters, and I shall use it on my bio, and I shall tell anyone who asks that I'm a city, you know, county board of supervisors." So I don't know how that fits in with this. I just want to make sure, as you say, we just want to make sure that everybody's being transparent. And if somebody asks me if I'm on city council, it's on my bio, it's on my LinkedIn, it's common knowledge because we're all publicly elected officials. Now, there's a big difference between me having, you know, or one of us having the title up there as, we are speaking as a council member, you know, yeah, that's transparent, that, I mean, that's obvious. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what Mr. McClure just said about, we can't have it in our bio now or LinkedIn? I don't understand that. I just want to make sure I completely understand what he just said.
I can give you an example, Cat. I asked, because I asked Bill, so like at my work, someone wanted to write within my work bio that I was a city council member in Menlo Park, and using the term, using the city identification of Menlo Park, when I ran it through legal, was like, not a good idea. So what I, what my bio says is I am an elected official somewhere in the Silicon Valley, because that is accurate in my bio, but I'm not using the city's, city designation or anything like that. So, Mr. McClure? Do you want to expand on that?
Yeah, I mean, that's correct, because the problem is, is you can't use your title to endorse a product, and so if it's in a work bio specifically, then, you know, or in a bio that is for promoting a product or something, you want to be careful not to be using the City of Menlo Park in connection with that.
Well, yeah, obviously, we would want to, that I get, okay.
So, and so the, and the other, the second point was just transparency. So transparency, and it's like, so we're not being precluded from identifying ourselves on a panel outside of the city? We can, it's just, if you were inside the county, people would know, would know when that occurs. If you're outside the county, it's hard for folks to keep track of. So similar to how they do it in Santa Clara County, no one tells them they can't ever use their title outside of the county. It's just that when they travel and they do use it, that there is a, there is a listing of it in the, in the agenda.
Sure, I get it. No, I understand that. I just want to make sure I absolutely know, because I don't want anyone coming back and saying, "Oh, no, you didn't do this correctly." But if one of us are at the National League of Cities, say, for example, or something like that, I guess that would be noticed ahead of time that we're going there, so that wouldn't be a problem, correct?
Yeah, that, well, if you're going to the National League of Cities and you're using your title, and it's like you're going to Washington DC, that's exactly the type of circumstance then in Santa Clara County, they list in the agenda a week before.
Well, we would, we would, that's the kind of thing that we would tell everyone we're going before we go anyway.
Well, the practice, my experience on council has been haphazard on that, of whether or not we reported we were going or not.
All right. But Mr. McClure, if we say we're a council member from California or whatever, and someone asks, I just say, I just want to make sure I'm completely clear.
So, I mean, typically, when you are attending the League of California Cities Meeting, you're attending, you know...
Not that, I'm saying in general.
Okay, I'm not clear on the question.
So you're asking if you're in a business, so if you're in a personal business context, and someone asks if you're an elected official, or are you attending something as a government, or as a government official?
I could be in Safeway in Oklahoma and talking to someone and say I'm an elected official. I mean, I'm just saying, in what situation, if someone, in any situation, if someone asks, I assume it's okay to tell them, we just don't, we just don't advertise it.
Yeah, but in Safeway, I mean, if you're just in Safeway talking to someone, you didn't travel to Safeway to like, sit on a panel in Safeway in Oklahoma? Like, there's a difference.
I'm speaking in high, I'm speaking hyperbole. I'm just saying, in any situation.
So the answer is, so it is, you know, obviously, you are an elected official in Menlo Park, somebody asks you, you're in a conversation with somebody, you can identify yourself as a city council member from the City of Menlo Park. You know, they're asking, you know, you something, you may want to explain that you're not representing the City of Menlo Park, but you are an elected official from Menlo Park. I mean, it, a lot of it is context, and so it's...
Okay, that's my only question. Thank you. I appreciate that. No, I'm good with that, that's fine.
So I have a question, sketch a scenario. So let's say my alma mater invites me back to be on a panel of alumni, which I share with Nick. It's in New York, so certainly not in San Mateo County. Do I have to get authorization for them to describe me as a city council member in Menlo Park?
So it's not in a business contract, you're not trying to make money, it, you know, it is, it's really about, it's identifying, you are an elected official in Menlo Park, it is one of your positions. So if somebody's doing a bio or introducing you, they can certainly say that you're a city council from the City of Menlo Park.
Yeah.
You know, and that can be part of that bio. I think the difference is in where you are rep, where you are at an event and you're speaking, and you are being asked to speak about a topic, are you there speaking as a council member, or are you there speaking as an individual? And so it's trying to differentiate and be clear, if you're there speaking as a council member, then maybe that requires pre-authorization from the city council to be there in an official capacity, speaking for the City of Menlo Park. That's kind of the question. As opposed to, you're there, you're speaking as an alumni to the Alumni Association, and just part of who you are is an elected official in Menlo Park, you may be talking about your experience as an elected official in Menlo Park, or issues facing the City of Menlo Park, but are you speaking officially as a city council member? No, you're speaking as Drew Combs, a graduate of, you know, your university.
Thanks.
Mayor Mueller, apologize for interruption, but we do need to take acclamation, majority vote to continue the meeting past 11:00.
All right, do you guys want to continue the meeting past 11 o'clock?
Yes.
All right, well, we'll revisit at 11:30. Councilmember Nash?
I want to get, so is this when we're not traveling on, when we're, I'm just wondering, Mayor Protem Taylor and I are regularly now going to Santa Clara County for Stanford GUP meetings, and we are going in, sometimes we're going and just attending in the audience. The other day, someone called out and said, "We have elected officials here from Menlo Park." We're not talking about that situation?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Because you are there in your capacity as a city council member from Menlo Park.
Okay, so if you're there in a capacity as, yes. Okay.
Right, and then the question becomes, if you are asked to give an opinion, you know, on something from Menlo Park, then the question becomes, are you speaking as an individual council member and not on behalf of the city council of Menlo Park? Because the city council has not taken a position on it. So it's just, it's making clear then, kind of, how, who you're speaking for, if you're asked a question or asked to speak. But you are certainly there representing Menlo Park to hear and gather input and understand what's going on at that GUP hearing.
All right, I'm, this is starting to become Charlie Brown for me, and it's late, so I'm just ready to entertain the vote on what we have, and then if we can just all try to abide by for, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Nash?
So I've had one resident who asked me to include name tags along with titles. I don't, so I'm just throwing it out there.
I don't even know where my name tag is.
In other words, that staff, staff and officials appear in an official capacity using title or wearing name tag in addition to that side of things?
I don't under, I seriously don't even know where my name tag is. Are you saying that we have to wear a name tag?
I don't think it's necessary. If you're using, your title's on the name tag, right? It's like redundant. If you're using your title, the title would be on the name tag. I think it's just redundant.
All right, Mayor Mueller, I move to approve the item.
All right. We already had a second? I can't get my thing to work, so yeah. All right, let's vote and vote.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. And I withdrew my discussion about whether or not advance notice was going to be required because frankly, it started to become, I think it's going to become unwieldy to try to throw that in there now, so. Well, let's go ahead and move on then to our next item, which is the approval of city council appointments to various subcommittee and liaisons outside agencies. There's no staff presentation. Do we have public comment on this item? Okay, council discussion. So there's a number of items here listed. We're going to, what I'd like to do is hold off on the Facebook Willow Ad Hoc Subcommittee for item, because actually, I'd like to sit down with representatives from Facebook and try to figure out what their timeline is on this. There may not be any council votes on this, I would expect, until late next year or mid next year, and if that's the case, it might make sense for me to not have maybe on this subcommittee, but rather be, be two council members who are going to be on this committee going forward. So, because frankly, from what I'm hearing, it's also a bit optimistic that this might get done by August of next year. So having two council members who are on this for the full, who are on this for a longer term might make sense, because there would be an election in the middle of that. We need to go ahead and point, so let us check in with Facebook and get some clarity around that. Does that work for everyone? Yep. Motion, I need, so we need the Housing Ad Hoc Subcommittee who'd like to serve on that.
We can hold it over till next time if there's no volunteers since 11 o'clock at night?
All right, we'll hold it over till next time.
I'll be, I'll be happy to volunteer for the Ad Hoc Subcommittee on Willow 101.
Okay. Do we have a second person who wants to be on the Willow US 101 interchange? Cecilia does. All right, guys, by acclamation, can we do that? Yep, great. I'd like to be on the Fire Protection Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Yep, great. I'd like to be on the Fire Protection Ad Hoc Subcommittee, if that works for you guys. Anyone want to be on it with me?
Um, sure, I can do it.
Drew beat you to the punch, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. By acclamation, we're all good there. Minimum Wage Ordinance Ad Hoc Subcommittee, anyone want to be on that one? If you guys don't want one, I can just frame it up with staff, with what the different options, doesn't matter. Does that work for you guys?
I could do it.
Okay, that's fine, Betsy and I'll do that.
It's fine if you want to do this.
I actually don't, it's fine, either way's fine, as, as I'm sure as, in my role as mayor, I was going to have to work with staff on that anyway, so. All right, Ad Hoc Subcommittee, we'll wait till next time, so those are all the ones that we had, that you had listed for me to cover, are we missing anything? What?
The United States Department of Commerce, the Department of Energy, the Department of Homeland Security, the Department of Defense.
Ms. Nash?
Um, I actually was not able to say anything because of Brown Act, but I would be interested, if you are not interested in, if you're interested in coming off the Rail Committee, I would be interested in serving on it, but it's entirely up to you. If anyone, if...
I'm fine on it, but, but we can check in again in a couple of months, but I, I think I'm, yeah.
All right, sir, go ahead.
Um, could you explain, what is the Subcommittee on Housing? Or does anyone know?
I'm not, I think it was supposed to frame up the housing issues to just, for discussion of staff for that Subcommittee, for that study session, I'm working with the Housing Commission, so we can leave that, I mean, it needs to be probably more well-framed anyway, so we'll leave that blank for now. On the Equity and Education Subcommittee, I'm, as you, I am hearing the sensitivities around, from folks around that issue, I'm still going to be involved in that issue, just because as mayor, and frankly, like today I met with, so today I met with Superintendent of the Ravenswood District, and also the Board President, and they indicated, it's funny, he left, they indicated they still want to move forward with the flood housing site project, they're sending an official, they're sending an official letter to that, to that effect, to the city, saying they want to continue to move forward with that. So I'm still going to be involved, but because of the sensitivity, folks, if folks would prefer, I was thinking, actually, it's not in my, Willow Oaks is not in my district, so if you're interested in serving on that with Cecilia, just for better outreach to the community, happy to do that, I'm still going to be in my role as mayor, I still care about this issue tremendously, but I also am hearing that maybe it might make sense to add three heads instead of just two. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you. I, I believe that one of the concerns from the community, well, a few of the concerns with the community, is that they, some of them are already working on projects around bringing high-quality education into the community, and so that wasn't considered, and so during goal-setting, I had asked to rename it, and the renaming had to do with having a Subcommittee that supported community who wanted to bring higher-quality education, so it would be, we would support the community, so that was the idea behind it.
I mean, respectfully, you know, over the years, working in Bell Haven, there are folks who, like, tonight, we heard from Mr. Henry, who wants to separate from the district, I've also heard from members of the community who live in Bell Haven who don't, and so, and I'm not, like, trying, I sincerely am not trying to work against any community members, I was, you know, in offering that, it was a tentative suggestion, given the fact that we have had, we have had community members try to break away from the district and been turned down, and so in the discussion of a study session, it was just an idea to be talked about, that if the state isn't going, if, if different community members are trying different things, and it's not, the state won't allow certain things, do we just, I mean, do we talk about all, all possible options or not? I'm not, I'm not trying, I wasn't, I'm not trying to work against anyone at all, and it's, trust me, I mean, I, I've gotten it from all sides on this issue, but I just, but it was just an idea, so.
Well, just in the interest of time, because I might go blank in a, in a thought, is, is just, for me, I would see the Subcommittee as a way to support whatever the community was asking for, so having a study session on it, I'm sure that they would support that, just to talk about the different options.
Okay.
It was brought up two years ago, and then there was never, well, it was brought up, there was a discussion in the community about education, but there hasn't been anything in the past two years, so.
So, the, and I can, I can speak to the JPA issue, I mean, frankly, what happened with the JPA was, right after we brought it up, and at that time in East, for various reasons that I'm not going to get into, there started to be tremendous discord between the Ravenswood School District and the East Palo Alto City Council, and it became very difficult to try to land a joint powers agency while that was occurring, and especially when, when internally, and then also frankly, in some sectors, and here in Menlo Park, some groups in Menlo Park didn't well receive it either, so I had an issue taking place where there was no clear landing pad in East Palo Alto, and, and here in Menlo Park, it was, it was, some folks didn't, you know, in the community weren't, weren't supportive of it, so it was like, okay, well, we'll wait until the time is right, ripe for it. I certainly have, you know, I have, and just heard from Aura Carrington again, they have the JPA documents ready for people to look at, but my, my guess would be, if I brought those documents forward, again, we would hear from community members saying, "We don't want you to give support to the, the Ravenswood School District, we want out of the Ravenswood School District," which I've heard in the past, I've heard from other community members who say, "Help the Ravenswood School District," I don't know what the answer is, but what I do know is that I just want to present all the ideas and have everybody talk about it, and then what I don't want to be in the position is, you know, and I probably won't be here anymore, obviously, but seven years from now, saying, "Gosh, we did a lot of talking about a lot of things, but no one could decide on doing anything in the district is in the exact same shape it was in," and that's like, that's not where I want to be. And so, that's why I've always kind of taken the position, look, everyone, you know, you have your, you pursue what you're pursuing vigilantly, just give me some space to make some accomplishment, so. So, I'd like to stay on it, if it's, if that makes sense to you guys, but if you prefer, I can come off too, whatever works. Yeah.
I, I'd like to stay on it, just because it's something I'm hugely passionate about, but I don't know how that works.
Oh, Kat, Kat, sorry, I think you forgot, at the council, earlier this year, Cecilia took your place on that Ad Hoc Subcommittee when we were doing the initial assignments.
Okay, that's fine. Can I, I, this is a matter of, of, last meeting, we pulled it off of the work plan, you might remember I argued not to do that until we were sure, we might want to add that back?
So, what I've said about, this is the flood housing site, and what I said to them was that when they need to go ahead and send a letter, an official letter, saying that they want to add it back in, and then we'll bring it into, like we said last week, we'll go ahead and bring that into, there's got to be process around that, so we'll bring it into a city council meeting for people to look at. Councilmember Nash?
Okay, great, that's perfect.
Councilmember Nash?
I'm just wondering how much as city council members do we, is it in our purview to go into the education area?
Guys, we, we deal with education around the edges a lot, and this issue, forming a JPA, certainly something that we can do, we work, I mean, I think you saw, we can work with our school board members and school districts to support them, so, but again, it is, it's a question that when we get there, of how much time we will actually spend into it, ultimately, school board, the school board makes their decisions and have jurisdictions over their subject matter, but certainly, it's something that we get, in my experience, we've been asked to engage on quite a bit on council, so. Are we, we're all good? All good? Okay, we can go ahead. Councilmember Carlton, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I'm very happy, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for staying with us late, being two hours ahead, greatly appreciated. So, informational items, there's no staff presentations, anyone have any questions about the staff presentations, staff informational items? All right.
Mayor Mueller? I just would like to add that on the work plan item, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There, what, there's been a request to update the language for the near-term parking solutions in the downtown, which you can find on, on your page 187, the work plan item is develop and implement near-term downtown parking and accessibility strategies, that's how it's stated in the staff report, it should, it should read, "Develop and implement near-term downtown parking and access strategies."
Thank you. Good catch. All right, Councilmember Nash?
I'm wondering on item G1, with the commission reports, whether it looks like that we should be reaching out to commissioners falling below the 67% category to determine the reasons for absences and access the ability, assess the ability to continue their commission service, so should each of us is...
I think, I think, do you want the council members to do that, or should we ask staff, their staff liaison?
That's what I'm wondering, is just how to go about doing that.
Let's ask professional staff liaisons to ask, it can, if we started to create a habit of council members reaching out, I could foresee that this could get political. So, okay. All right, any other, any city managers, or did you, something you want to add about the J, no? Oh, thank you for being here, late. Did you want to, you stayed so late, do you want to share something with us, or?
So, I'm Executive Director, if you want me to come up?
Yes, that'd be great.
So, hello, I'm the Executive Director of Mid Penn Media Center, and I just wanted to be here and be available if the agenda item came up and you had any questions, so I'm sure that we'll be presenting some more information and reports and getting, getting to know you more as we move forward.
Thank you.
I actually did have a question, though, maybe it's not for you, for whoever is the staff liaison on this issue, and maybe that person's not here, but it seems like from the staff report, Menlo Park didn't really have, doesn't really have much power, that at some point, we, we seem to have given much of it, if not all of it, away to Palo Alto, so what actually, will we possibly be deciding, like, could we block this sale? I guess is the, the question I have.
Right now, Palo Alto City Council has the sole authority to make voting decisions on behalf of the JPA. I guess one of my concerns was making sure that our city council was aware of this, and if necessary, we could bring back an item to look at changing the JPA agreement to address that. In the past, it was not an issue as much, this is a rather large asset purchase, and I wanted to make sure that our council members were aware of it, and if their direction was there, we could explore changing the JPA in order to ensure that we do have a vote on decisions like these.
And can we just bring up, like, the JPA as far, as far as changes, like, does, does, if we say we want to change it, does Palo Alto have to consent to begin some negotiation, or can we say, can we unilaterally, unilaterally say, we want to renegotiate the JPA?
There, there are provisions for members to trigger changes if they want to leave the JPA, that is not our ultimate goal, it would be to possibly modify it, so I'd have to look at the exact provision, but there is a triggering provision that we could cause if that's the only way to accomplish that.
Thank you.
All right, city managers' report, non-council member reports, any? Nope, okay, meeting's adjourned.